Good morning, everyone. I'm Mike Pennington, Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. And before we get started today, I'd like the members up here to introduce themselves. We have a few folks that are going to be late. Secretary Teresa Miller from the Department of Human Services, and Marcus Brown from the Governor's Office of Homeland Security, and a few others that are going to be arriving in a little while. So I'd just like the folks here to please introduce yourselves.
Jim Koppel with Strategic Applications International. We're here to help facilitate our meetings and the various hearings.
And my name is Representative Eric Nelson from Westmoreland County. I am representing the House Republicans on the Governor's Special Counsel on Gun Violence. It's really a pleasure to be here today.
Okay. Thank you. On behalf of the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency and Chairman Charles Ramsey, I'd like to welcome you to this morning's hearing on preventing suicide by firearms. This morning's hearing is hosted by the Special Counsel on Gun Violence, which was established by an executive order signed on August 16th by Governor Wolf. The Special Counsel includes 18 members representing different professions and perspectives, including public health, public safety, law enforcement, education, human services, criminal justice, juvenile justice, victim services, research, state and local governments, among others. Today's hearing is the third in a series that will explore various issues related to gun violence in the Commonwealth. We look forward to hearing this morning from presenters representing public health practitioners and researchers, prevention experts, advocates, as well as law enforcement and public safety on trends we are seeing in Pennsylvania related to mental health concerns and suicide risk among youth, the Commonwealth's suicide prevention efforts to date, as well as proposed and enacted Extreme Risk Protection Order laws. It is important to note that today's discussion serves as a starting point for the work of the Special Counsel, to listen to and learn from individuals with professional experience and expertise on the topic of suicide prevention, and specifically, suicide by firearms. We appreciate the group of people who present to us this morning for sharing their perspectives and recommendations with us, but know that they do not represent the full scope or scale of an issue that manifests itself in so many complex ways. Our intent today is to begin with the conversation, to begin the conversation, and we ask those with us in the audience, as well as those serving on panels, to listen and engage with one another in a respectful and productive manner. While it is unlikely everyone will agree on the underlying causes, approaches, or strategies put forth and discussions today, it is important to remember that everyone here today shares the goal of preventing gun violence in our communities and our Commonwealth. To support its work, the Special Counsel has identified five stakeholder workgroups focused on key areas of gun violence, including mass shootings, accidental shootings, suicide by firearms, domestic violence-related shootings, and community gun violence. We've also developed a webpage and an online public comment survey where individuals can share their thoughts and perspectives with members of the Special Counsel. The webpage and survey can be accessed on PCCD's website at PCCD.pA.gov. We also invite members of the audience today to share your ideas and questions you may have by using our printed feedback form, which was made available with your agenda and handouts for this morning's event. One of our team members, Samantha Cook, who's right there, will be available to collect those forms from you during the hearing. As I stated before, we know that this meeting's conversation may include topics and information that can be difficult to hear. If at any point during today's hearing you feel uncomfortable and need to step away to take a break, please feel free to do so. And if you or someone you love is in crisis, or you're considering harming yourself, free help is available 24/7 through the National Suicide Prevention Hotline at 1-800-273-8255. As I mentioned before, the Governor's Executive Order asked the Special Counsel to engage a wide array of stakeholders in its efforts to identify recommendations and best practices to combat gun violence in the Commonwealth. With that charge in mind, we're honored to have a few individuals here with us today to share their perspectives and expertise on this issue. Before we begin, I'd like to look and to see if any of the Special Counsel members want to offer any opening remarks.
Thank you, Mike, and thank you, you know, members who are going to testify today. We're really looking forward in engaging and learning in what is an extremely controversial issue. Specifically, you know, today we're focusing on the subset of suicide and looking to prevent suicide. You know, personally knowing individuals who have taken their lives, knowing young people who have taken their lives, and seeing that, you know, I'm a father of six children, and I think the pressures on young people in school today, as well as the isolation that oftentimes older folks feel that all other lesser means have failed, and they have no choice but to take their own life. So I disagree with that concept, and I'm anxious to hear testimony today to help reduce those numbers from experts in the field. So thank you for your time and preparation today.
Thank you, Representative Nelson. Now I'd like to turn things over to Jim Koppel, who's the founding partner at Strategic Applications International, who will be assisting us with facilitation of this morning's hearing.
Great. And I want to add my welcome to this process, and kind of let me give a quick review of our process. We have three panels, and the panelists, each of the panelists will make their presentations, and then the Counsel will be able to ask questions, get clarification on information, or the need for additional information from each of the panelists. So we'll have all, the three panels, and the first panel go first, and then we'll open it up to questions. I want to reinforce what Mike said. If people in the audience have a question or a concern that you'd like to see addressed, there's a form for you to fill out, and you can give it to Samantha, who's over here, and she'll collect those, and we'll be sure to address those questions after each of the panels. And then when the panel is finished, they will excuse them and invite the second panel up. And so we have a series of subject matter experts and people who can speak into these various issues, and we're glad you're here. And so we will start today's panel with Brittany Klein and Mike Vareb. Brittany is a Program Director with Safe to Say Something, Pennsylvania Office of the Attorney General, and Mike is the Director of Government Relations in the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General. And Jeff Colchon, did I say that right, Jeff? Good. Program Manager, he's Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and they will speak into the issue. And so, Mike, I'll turn to you first, and you and Brittany can go.
Good morning. Thank you. Thank you to the members of the Counsel. I also serve on the Counsel as Chairman of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. And Mike, I thank you and everyone at PCCD for recognizing the impact that Safe to Say is having on our children in a good way here in Pennsylvania. I'm going to give you an overview of how we got to today with Safe to Say, and then turn it over to Director Klein on how it actually works. Act 44 was signed into law by Governor Wolf in 2018. This was a bipartisan effort of Senator Vince Hughes and Senator Pat Brown, who were both Chairs of the Appropriation Committee in the Senate. It was their concept, it was their idea, to bring this to Pennsylvania, modeling it after Colorado. We worked in our office with them. Our office is not a 24/7 operation. This was something new to us. You can imagine, not only the limited time we had to get it launched, but the complete change of chemistry of where our office operates to make this program work. The legislature gave us a partial year funding to start off with a start date of January 14th of 2019. The good news is, we did launch effectively January 14th of 2019, and it worked after that date to get over 800,000 students and school teams and 911 centers trained on the program. We did not do that ourselves. We partnered with the great folks at Sandy Hook Promise. We have a relationship with them, a multi-year relationship with them, where they brought their expertise to the table and helped us get across the state to educate the educators and the students and parents and 911 centers on how to not only submit tips, but how to deal with these tips when they come in. So we're very proud of the work that's been done. To say that it is stressful to deal with this program and to deal with the tips that are coming in is an understatement, but nonetheless, Attorney General Shapiro has put the edict down pretty significantly that this program is of paramount importance. And as you'll hear from Director Klein, our first annual report, which is only a partial school year, from January 14th to June 30th, you'll hear the amount of work that went in. You'll also hear that the students are committed to this program, and they're also frankly committed to this issue and want to be part of the discussion, whether it's suicide, bullying, or other events in school that distract them from getting a safe education in our schools. So I'll turn it over to Director Klein, and then we'll both be available for questions.
Good morning. As Mike stated, I'm the Program Director of the Safe to Say Something program with the Attorney General's Office. I have a team. Our office developed a 24/7 crisis center, which consists of eight investigative analysts, as well as a crisis center supervisor. They are 24/7, 365, so we do, we do work 365 days a year. After the program rolled out in January 14th, we received, in the partial school year, 23,494 tips, just in that partial school year. The top tip type from last year was bullying or cyberbullying, which approached about almost 4,000 tips. In the next couple categories of our top tips were related to cutting, self-harm, suicides, and suicide ideation, and depression, and anxiety. Those were our top tip categories, which we weren't sure exactly what to expect. I think that the numbers shocked everyone at the closure of the school year. As a result of those numbers that we saw, we did add additional training to my team members in order to handle tips and take care of those tips a little bit better. We were actually trained by Perry Rosen, who is here today as well, on youth mental health first aid, and she also aided our crisis center with developing additional protocols to process these tips. We actually also did a Safe to Say Week this September, and we went out to schools to hear from students to see how they liked the program, and if it was working for them, and what kinds of things that we could do to make the program better. Students are very aware of the mental health crisis in our state, and just in their schools, and their concern, their concern for their peers. They actually had some great ideas that they brought up to us about how they would like to be engaged in that process to help their peers, and actually roll out Safe to Say information so that kids would take it more seriously and know that we are there to kind of bridge that gap and give them the resources they need to take charge of their own mental health, and obviously, they're the friends that they're concerned with. Our data also shows that we have received tips regarding substance abuse and physical abuse, sexual abuse, and threats against schools. I just wanted to hit on, obviously, the topic of suicide, and how we've seen just a significant amount of numbers regarding that specific topic. And I'm available for any questions regarding that information, then.
Great. Thank you. Jeff?
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Counsel members, as well as the audience that'll be watching this as it's being recorded. My name is Jeff Colchon. I'm a Program Manager in the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention at the Commission on Crime and Delinquency. As you can tell by our office title, there's two main functions for our office. We work with youth that have gotten involved with the juvenile justice system, help them build competencies, make restitution to their victims, and hopefully, not offend again. That's one of the main roles that our office has. But we also are responsible for delinquency prevention, trying to find approaches and programs that can help prevent kids from engaging in problem behaviors that can involve them with juvenile justice in the first place. Over the years, we've supported the proliferation of what we know, what we call early upstream prevention programming, trying to get ahead of problems before they occur, helping youth build resiliency, and helping to support family management, to help youth have a safe and wholesome upbringing in their families, their communities, and in their schools. The basis of our prevention planning uses what's called a public health approach. We want to determine why youth engage in problem behaviors, then act on those root causes, rather than simply targeting the behaviors themselves. The example we always use is the issue of heart disease in public health. You do not wait till someone has a cardiac event, rather you try to identify the causes or the issues that can lead to someone having a heart attack, a stroke, issues such as that. So you would want to put in premises such as increased exercise, better diet, quitting smoking. The same thing will work around prevention. We want to try to identify the reasons that kids engage in problem behaviors, such as substance use, delinquency, violence, teen pregnancy, and depression and mental anxiety. The main source for our information for this prevention planning comes from what's known as the Pennsylvania Youth Survey, or PAES. The PAES is a survey of students in the 6th, 8th, and 10th grades. It's been offered every other year in the fall of odd years since 1989, and it is the only source of information that comes directly from our kids, what they know, what they think, and what they believe about issues affecting their lives. This information is used by communities, schools, and other organizations in Pennsylvania to determine what local needs are. Rather than going for what is identified at the state level or the national level, the PAES allows school districts and the communities to partner with school districts to identify the specific problems faced by their kids, and choose evidence-based approaches to address those, providing supports that can help those youth succeed in life. The administration is currently going on for 2019. Most recent data will come out in April of next year. In 2017, the last full administration, we had 379 of our 500 school districts participate, and over 250,000 students took part in that survey. Each year, we look to see what sort of issues are pressing in the Commonwealth, and make adjustments to the survey instrument to target questions around those issues. Beginning in 2015, the PAES added questions on bullying, mental health, suicidal ideation, and self-harm. These were issues that we're tracking as of primary concern to policymakers, so we wanted to have information from our youth directly about what they see around those issues. Unfortunately, we're seeing some worrisome data being reported by our youth. In the 2017 summary data, 28.2% of participating youth reported being bullied during the last year. This spiked at 31.4% by our 8th graders. 38.1% of all students reporting feeling sad or depressed most days over the last year. This is at 41.4%, over two out of five students of our 10th graders reported feeling sad or depressed. 24.8% of youth reported that sometimes they think life is not worth it, including 28.4% of our seniors. 14% of students reported engaging in self-harm behaviors, including 17.1% of our 10th graders. And finally, and probably most scary overall, 16.5% of all youth reported considering suicide during the past year. This is about 20% of our seniors and our sophomores. 10% of our youth reported actually attempting suicide, including 11.5% of our 10th graders and 12% of our 12th graders. PAES also provides information specific for this Counsel's topic of interest, on how easy it would be for them to access a handgun if they wanted to get access to that. 14.2% of our youth reported that it would be easy, or somewhat easy, for them to access a handgun, with ranges reporting from 28.3% in Fulton County to 7.8% in Montgomery County. So PAES provides a lot of information that can be used to determine programs and approaches that can address the issues that arise from the data. We recognize that it is important to continue to provide supports for our youth who may be struggling. Each year, we release a funding announcement that is a dedicated line item that's provided by the legislature and the Governor's Office, called Violence and Delinquency Prevention Programs. During the last implementation of that funding, we added two new programs to our eligible list. C-BETS, Cognitive Behavioral Intervention for Trauma in Schools, and the Blues Program, which is a group depression and anxiety program for seniors to come together and talk through some of the issues they have. We provide funding for schools and local nonprofits that allow them to implement these programs. We collect data on the outcomes of those programs and use that to determine the amount of funding that we put towards those sorts of initiatives. One of the other areas that we are very proud of, that we work with, is we're working to increase awareness about and the use of what's known as a social development strategy. This is a approach that is the foundation of the Communities of Care model that we support at PCCD. Communities of Care, or CTC, brings together all the key stakeholders in a defined community to collect local data, identify the local needs, and select programming to address those needs, then continue to meet, to identify changes that need to be made moving forward. The social development strategy teaches adults to provide skills, opportunity, and recognition for youth, to help them develop healthy behaviors and engage in pro-social activities. We find that by training adults to recognize when their youth do well, it can help them have more confidence in themselves, to engage in pro-social rather than negative problem behaviors, and to have supports in the community, in their families, and in their schools. It helps them build resiliency that can buffer them from problems that they face as they go through life. PCCD is also working through our School Safety and Security Committee to help schools develop approaches, to help students and faculty deal with issues of trauma and other mental health concerns. Information about the PAES, the School Safety and Security Committee, and the Communities of Care program can be found on our website, which is www.pccd.pA.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Also, just to remind the audience that the panelists are providing information, they're also providing specific recommendations. Part of the work of the Counsel is to advance recommendations that are actionable, not just abstract and distant philosophical statements about a particular topic the Governor is interested in, what we can actually do related to gun violence. And so, in that sense, some of the questions that are following will be practical, hopefully, in that process. I wanted to ask Mike and Brittany the question in terms of, is suicide sort of the number one issue in the tips reporting? Is that?
Yes, and we feel that that's pretty consistent with last year and into this year as well. You know, typically, we'll get a report of bullying or cyberbullying, but the more that you talk to that person, it might escalate into a more severe problem, so we can reclassify tips. But I think those top tip categories that we see on trend for this year as well, they all kind of coincide with one another. The bullying, the suicide, depression, anxiety, and cutting self-harm.
Okay, so those are sort of the major influences?
Yes.
If I may, just our very first tip on the very first day was a confirmed self-cutting in the cafeteria of a school here in the Commonwealth. And as I've said previously, there's not a lot we can talk about specifically, where government statute, what we can and cannot say. And I just urge everyone to go to the Safe to Say PA.org website, and at the bottom of that page is our annual report, which is broken down by intermediate unit. And as I've stated previously as well, these issues do not discriminate by zip code, they are across the entire Commonwealth.
Do you have the ability in the process? And by the way, they testified yesterday on mass casualty shooting, and I thought about this over the night. And so, some of the questions I'm going to ask related to this specific program, do you have the capacity at all to identify these tips to the instrumentality of an attempted suicide, whether it's a gun, a knife, or whatever? Do you have that capacity?
It would rely on the information that the tipster provides. Part of our protocols is to always ask if that student has access to weapons, and what kind of weapons they would be. Sometimes the tipsters know, sometimes they're not sure. And that's where communication to the school is really important for my team, because that might dictate whether 911 is called and goes out to the residents, or if a school counselor or a crisis counselor can actually help that student. So that information is important, but sometimes we just don't know.
Okay.
Brittany, you're, as you were sharing, some of the Safe to Say, and as a parent of teens themselves, even though our schools have counselors in them, sometimes it's difficult for a student to approach a counselor because, particularly if they're going to share information about another student. So can you touch on that confidentiality piece so that young people can realize and feel comfortable that they can engage privately through Safe to Say and not necessarily expose themselves to maybe backlash, you know, that might happen in a middle school?
Sure. Absolutely. So what was interesting when we went out for the Safe to Say, we can actually talk to students, a lot of them had ideas that when we received a tip, we did know who actually was, who the person was rescinding the tip. And we kind of told them, no, we don't see anything more than what you provide us. Obviously, we do have protocols in place if a certain life safety matter, you know, would occur. However, we do not see who the tipster is unless they provide their name. Occasionally, we will get first person, or even they may submit a tip as third person, but they're actually submitting a tip on themselves. And we let them know that, you know, we can provide you with that connection to either a counselor or somebody you trust. Or we find that kids really love the text crisis line. If they have not made any statements about hurting themselves, but they actually want to talk to somebody, they love the text crisis line. Kids, you know, they're all about texting and technology, so we provide them with that resource as well. But we find that, you know, showing them that we can actually make that connection for them, instead of them actually walking up to an adult, sometimes they just don't, they're scared, they're not sure what's going to happen, and we walk them through that process. We find that that's been very helpful, and as a result, we've had a lot of successful interventions just this year with kids who have had suicide ideation, and we were able to intervene and get them to somebody who could help them.
Representative, if I may add to that, that the one thing in Safe to Say Week, I mean, I appreciate your question, I think it's a great question. What we heard from students in pretty much the three areas of the state, including North Hills that we're in, is a lack of resources at our schools. So the one thing the Attorney General has advocated in the conclusion of our report, I know you're not going to want to hear this, it's only November, but as we approach the next fiscal year, funding for mental health help in our schools. What we heard were schools are actually doing their best to give students access via hall passes, and I remember this one young lady who said, "I have a, you know, kind of an all-weather pass, I can leave school class whenever I want." But I think it was three times she went to the counselor's office, and there was no one there. So I think there's two things. I think there's a fear of asking for help, but the worst is then to offer them help, and it's not there. So we've solved both sides of that equation, and the General is very adamant in that we need to have that conversation. I know the Senate Judiciary had a hearing on that matter as well.
Mike?
Yeah, this question's actually for the three of you, and Mike, you kind of alluded to this in your last answer, but given that, you know, the 23,000-plus tips and the information that Jeff presented, you know, there's a lot of, you know, those data points mirror each other in some ways around the issues around suicide, bullying, self-harm, et cetera, and mental health indicators. You know, what do you see as the biggest challenge, and, you know, what recommendations do you have to continue to better respond to these types of issues?
I'll repeat it because it's worth repeating. The General is, it's not just the General, it's Brittany and her team providing this report. And there's no, this was not a survey, this was not a poll, you're not going to hear about it on the news. These are real numbers, as Jeff has, and as you said, you know, maybe many months ago, it's amazing that our program mirrors the stats that have been collected. More money has to be focused on mental health assistance for these children in schools, whatever that looks like, and wherever the money comes from. The reality of it is, is that we're hearing from students that the help is not there. The doorway is there, but that the help is not there, and there's nothing worse we can do than point someone in a direction of help, and that office is not occupied.
Yeah, Mike, I would echo that. Obviously, everyone always says more resources will help, but in this case, I think that definitely is the case. We can wait till the problems occur, or we can get out in front of it. If we found through the work through our School Safety and Security Committee, we're seeing a lot of districts come in for mental health services, for training on trauma, working with students that have dealt with these issues that affect how they can respond in school, how well they're able to learn. And then, without the assistance, these students are kind of left adrift. So I think that the more we can put upfront for supports, for prevention, the return on investment is huge. I think that that's something that, it's very easy to bypass prevention, because you may not see, we always refer to it as you're trying to prove a negative, what didn't happen by putting these prevention programs in place. But by doing this upfront, we see better results, we see healthier kids, we see healthier families, and healthier communities in Pennsylvania. So I'll echo what the Attorney General's Office has said. So I'll echo what the Attorney General's Office has said. The more money we can put upfront, the better are the results. The more supports you can provide for our kids that have, are dealing with issues, the better are the results. And I think that that's the answer that maybe isn't the best that everyone wants to hear, but it's the one that'll work the most.
And a follow-up, initially on, from the Safe2Say piece, and then I wanted to share a little bit about what you were saying, Mike, from a counselor's perspective. Does Safe2Say have an app that students, how, what's that interface?
Sure.
Because I don't Instagram, I don't, you know, so how do they download that? And is that something that could be pushed? Like, our school system now has a text-based reach, so that link could be confidentially sent to all the students who have phones registered in the district?
Absolutely. So there are three ways to submit a tip to our program. The first way is the app, which kids love the app. We find that most of our tip, I would say probably 80% of our tips, come through the app. And you can download it through the Apple iTunes App Store, or you can download it through the Google Store. So any phone, you can, you can download the app to your phone and submit tips that way. The second way is through our website, so the Safe2Say PA.org, you can actually, so there's a link to go to to submit a tip that way. And then the third way is to call, just to call in, and you provide that information to one of the analysts, and then they will actually input the tip into the system. So those are the three ways. And some schools have elected to actually put that information on their website, so that parents can actually see, you know, these are the ways that we can submit tips, because parents actually will use the app or submit tips to us as well. And community members who become aware of the app have submitted tips to us. So there's letters that can be sent home. We've offered to come out to certain community nights or open houses, just to kind of relay that information to parents if they request it from us, and just pushing that information out. But we can certainly aid schools in pushing that information out to parents as well.
Great. And Mike, for, as a follow-up on the school council side, because, you know, definitely there's a financial component to the counseling, but in listening to and having dialogue with the counselors, they, there seem to be two things also at hand, and I'm not sure how deep that they're extremely micromanaged, both in the, in the time and the paperwork requirements that they're having to deal with, so the flexibility of how they would apply their day. And some of the driver of that paperwork is because of the lawsuits that school districts are incurring, and, you know, is anyone able to touch on, you know, from a school counselor perspective, their feeling that they're, you know, they have to overly document everything because of the legal aspect that schools are now fighting? Can somebody touch on that?
Not being a lawyer and not being in that field, we have heard more about liability in the system from solicitors, from schools. What if they do not act on a tip, are they liable? So our office, while we have a civil criminal and public protection division, we're not solicitors, so we are not able to give that advice. So I would just say to you that, I mean, we could certainly engage with counselors and the association representing school counselors, but we have not heard that from them particularly, to be more broad on the system. And one thing you hit on about that, and I gotta go back to that point of discomfort that people would have in reporting, understand that in this statute, that the protection and the anonymity of the tipster is paramount and punishable by law if anyone tries to identify that tipster or releases information about, you know, the actual tip. So in that world, to get the student into that office is our first push. In terms of liability and paperwork and challenges, I have to assume they're almost like a doctor in the field of medicine, but I, you know, we have not heard that in the system that I'm aware of.
I wanted to add that what I've seen as a result of this program, that collaborations have increased between agencies in various counties, which I think is also, you know, a huge benefit. We've had agencies reach out to us to say, "Hey, we've seen your data, how can we help?" And I basically just send them to the school and say, you know, "The school needs help," or, you know, "Law enforcement might receive additional training on how to deal with youth." And then also, I know that a couple counties had developed a protocol that anytime an officer responds to a juvenile's house for a suicide or suicide ideation call, that they actually automatically dispatch mobile crisis, because they're more equipped to deal with those types of situations than officers are typically. Obviously, I can't speak for every police department, but the collaborations just are the one thing that we hoped would happen, and they are happening. And as a result of going into this school year, they're changing protocols constantly in order to just get more resources to the kids and to the schools.
I wanna welcome Teresa Miller, Secretary of the Department of Human Services for the state, as one of the council members. I have a couple of questions that I want to follow up. In terms of the composition of your teams in the schools, and how are they determined? And how is, how's that framed?
We let the school choose how they would like to, you know, form their teams. Typically, when they first started, they used a lot of school administrators, so superintendents, assistant superintendents. But as they found moving forward, it was better to actually have principals, counselors, assistant principals on the team, who actually had more information on the students, because they had direct contact with them on a day-to-day basis. Obviously, each school is different, and based on size, that could change. But they can put on anybody on their team who is an employee with the school. We've also found that they've put on guidance counselors, as I've said, county crisis members in some schools that just don't have, you know, staffing abilities, and also police officers, school resource officers, and school police.
So it's a mandated program, correct?
Correct, it is.
So do you find, and this is, may sound rhetorical, but I'm curious in terms of your response, level of effort to be different throughout the state in terms of the schools?
We do.
Yeah, we do. And to what extent is that level of effort about resources?
At first, this program was received as a typical government mandate, but this one works. We're getting better. I think more of our, we had folks dropping resolutions opposing the program two months before launch, and understand that, well, we understood, that we needed the education sector early on. And doing something brand new and this big in the middle of a school year, we recognize that, you know, school years are typically planned out the year previous. But there was some great resistance to the program as a whole. There are still some schools that are complying with the law right up to the last period of the law. But to your point, the enthusiasm of engaging further to push this program hard, one of our jobs on our state tour of this program is to continue to encourage on how it is actually working. And again, our challenge is that we really cannot talk about much. The idea is the schools, local DAs, and police can talk about it, but we cannot go into communities and try to encourage schools to get involved by actual tips. They're seeing those tips, but the level of enthusiasm does fluctuate, but again, it's not rural, urban, it's sometimes, and mostly school-driven, and it's only a few. It's mostly, I'm trying to remember it on tape here, it's just mostly personality qualms with the state mandate.
You think that's gonna improve as the program becomes more recognized or noticed?
I think it already has. I think we're seeing the success of the program and interventions and the people coming forward in support of the program has changed certain mentalities. I feel like this year, they're a lot more engaged, and obviously, it is a huge lift for schools. So we understood why there would be some pushback anyway in the beginning. You know, it was difficult for us. And, you know, this year, definitely, I felt like rolled out a lot smoother, is a lot easier. And I think moving forward as we grow as a state with this program, and obviously receive feedback from schools, it's just gonna get better.
Yeah. Jeff, you mentioned on the survey, paths, is that?
Pace.
Pace, excuse me. I'm somewhat familiar with the National Youth Survey. Are you able to adjust questions? I mean, this is usually a trend survey, a data survey. Are you able to add questions as you go forward?
Yes, we, after each administration, we kind of take a step back and identify where there are new trends or new issues that, as I mentioned, policymakers would want information from our students on. We do try to keep the questions as similar as possible from year to year, looking for that trend line. The trend line is important because it allows us to see the impact of our programming, to see the, how well we're doing in addressing issues that may have been paramount in the past, that may be diminishing, and give that kind of, that confidence that we're taking the right approaches to help our kids.
You may have said this, does the survey ask any specific questions about access to guns?
Yes, there is the, how easy would it be for you to access a handgun if you wanted to obtain one? It does not specify whether that's within the house or in the community. We're not looking to do anything around gun rights, but rather, if a student wanted to access a handgun, could they get one? With the idea of either violence or self-harm.
You mentioned the Fulton County and I think it was...
Montgomery was a low.
Montgomery County?
Yes.
What was the difference between these two?
It was over 28% in Fulton County and just under 8% in Montgomery.
And forgive me for not knowing the counties in Pennsylvania, but what's the difference between those two counties?
Um, Montgomery is outside of Philadelphia. It's a suburb county, much more populous. Fulton is a rural county along the Maryland line, much more mountainous and not as built up as Montgomery.
How do you disseminate the data from your survey to those who are serving youth?
Absolutely. We have, the schools have taken the survey voluntarily. The survey is offered at no charge to any school district, private, public, or, excuse me, private charter, cyber, parochial school that wishes to take it. It is funded through the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs, Department of Education, and my agency, PCCD. The results of individual districts or schools are sent directly to the school administrator or the superintendent. The state does not receive the local data. If we receive requests for school district data, we direct the individual that's requesting it to go to the school district and request it directly. But what we find is that school districts often partner with community-based organizations, prevention coalitions, drug and alcohol coalitions, there are county-level folks, the county children and youth, the county, single-county authorities, to implement programs based on what's identified in the survey. So what we try to promote is a partnership approach based on the data. We want data-driven decision-making, so that's why we look for those partnerships to use this data directly from the kids.
So if the, in terms of the program, I mean, I'm a former superintendent of schools and principal, and familiar with the survey, and I'm encouraged by the fact that Communities of Care, which started off, quite frankly, as a deficit model, has now transitioned into an asset model, and the way you articulated, I'm really encouraged by that. But the coordination between state programming or policy development and the local community, the survey is sent to the local district, and then they figure out in terms of collaborations or partnerships, what they want to do with it. How much influence does the state then have in informing, or shaping, or resourcing what those programs might be?
We have a variety of funding sources that are available to communities and to schools. I mentioned our Violence and Delinquency Prevention Programs. The Department of Education puts out funding through their Safe Schools Program, Department Drug and Alcohol Program, the D-DAP puts out funding through their county-level folks. And then we encourage community prevention providers to look for sources such as the needs-based budget, to work with their county categoricals, to find ways to address issues that have been identified, to make life better for kids and families within the counties.
So if you have the, I mean, like, for example, in Fulton County, you have a high number that's dealing with a particular issue or problem, are you able to help resource that specific county?
Because of the limited funding, ours are competitive, and I would just like to state, I wouldn't say that it's a problem necessarily that, around the access to guns. I would just say that it's an area that, what we would encourage is if that, if you had a high level that you may want to implement an education approach, there's, how do you secure guns? How do you ensure that students that may be suffering from mental health issues do not have easy access to something that could harm themselves?
But there is that dialogue that can happen as a result of a survey result number.
Correct.
And the state to help collaborate or partner or fund a particular county.
Absolutely.
That mechanism is in place.
Yes, absolutely. And then my agency, we have a Training and Technical Assistance Organization at Penn State called the Epicenter, which is available to communities and schools across Pennsylvania that can help them look at their data and decide what their local needs are, and then select programs that have been proven effective in addressing those needs. Again, making the best use of our resources.
Representative, no?
Yes. Jeff, in building in, and I didn't have your testimony in advance, I was trying to take some notes, you had mentioned that you combined easy and somewhat easy, combined those numbers together to get that 14%?
Correct.
What was the breakout of those?
I do not have that handy. I can get that to you. We had, our, Principal Officer ran the data for me yesterday, so we could have the breakout by the counties, but we would be able to identify that and get it to you.
And was that a subset question underneath suicide, or was it an individual question someplace else in the survey?
It was an individual question. It is a standalone question, it's not specifically related to suicide.
So another question in the survey, because I'm not familiar with the survey itself, or moving forward, if it could include, you know, easy or somewhat easy, you know, access in the home or in the community, because I think you raised a good point in meeting with some of our community leaders, the proliferation of illegal guns that are in some of the communities, you know, in a meeting, you know, and they said, "Hey, we could go here and go buy a gun," you know, that access to illegal guns is not a challenge in, you know, in certain areas. And it would be great to be able to identify a little bit deeper in there, like, where is this access coming? Is it because there's a gun leaning against the wall by a door? Or is it because they know somebody who can get them, and it's falling into like, you know, the vaping, the drugs, the, you know, is it an outside influence or an inside?
We can definitely take that under advisement. As I mentioned, we'll be preparing for the 2021 administration, starting after this year's administration is complete. And regarding the gun next to the door, the question is specific around handguns, we're not asking about long rifles or things like that. And it's getting at the two issues, self-harm and the potential for using a gun as, in a violent act.
Who, to follow up on that?
Hold on, one second. The early upstream intervention program, I met with some of our districts 14, 18 months ago, you know, one of their areas of frustration was that they were not able to proactively engage students that hadn't, they knew they were on a pathway to doing wrong, but they had not done anything wrong yet, they hadn't entered that adjudication process, and that there were some changes that prevented them from engaging these students the way that they liked. Can you touch on the early intervention? Is that a newer program? Is that, are we allowing districts to engage more in this area? Because they were feeling that they, not until a student got in the fight, or struck their parent, or, you know, that it was after they were in the system that they got to engage in some of these resources?
Right. We fund both prevention and intervention programs. A lot of what we do is helping with social-emotional regulation, and I think that that's kind of where you're leading, is the idea of students that may be having trouble with anger. We fund a program called Aggression Replacement Training, which helps students understand and better, better regulate, better express their emotions in a more positive way, rather than reacting in a violent manner. We also support a variety of restorative programs, helping peer mediation type of efforts within schools, trying to find a way to work through difficulties without involvement of the juvenile justice system. We know that, we try to keep kids out of the system unless they're a danger to themselves or to the community at large. That's one of the objectives of PCCD in our partnership with the Juvenile Court Judges Commission and the Council of Chief Juvenile Probation Officers in Pennsylvania.
Thank you, thanks.
This, same question, but there's two sides to it. In terms of influencing the survey, and how the survey influences you, in terms of how you fund... you fund programs, to what extent does the survey data guide you in designing the grant programs you put together for local communities?
Absolutely. We, we do a, what we call gaps analysis every several years, to, to ensure that the programs that we, we support, currently there, there are 15 of them that are supported by PCCD and the Epicenter at Penn State. We, the PACE gives us what's known as risk and protective factors. I, I mentioned earlier about the idea of trying to get at the root causes. The, the, the research into evidence-based programs shows that certain programs are proven effective in addressing specific risk factors. So if a, if a school identifies high levels of risk for their students in a certain area, say poor family management, or early onset of drug and alcohol use, we help them select programs, we offer programs and help them select and implement those programs, shown effective at addressing those local needs.
So the other side of it is, when you're designing the survey or looking at questions, is the, does the community have an opportunity to participate? Do you invite community participation into that process?
We have a, we do receive feedback from, from parents, school administrators, it'd be nice if we would have information around X, Y, Z, and we do take that in consideration. The, the review and determination of the questions is headed by what's known as our PACE Advisory Group. That's made up of state-level, county-level, people representing county categoricals, children and youth, county, county drug and alcohol, as well as a number of local prevention practitioners, people from the, from the, the grassroots level that use the data to choose programs, implement it, and evaluate the, the impact of those programs. So we do have local representation, and we, we are open to suggestions from the field as we prepare for the, the upcoming administrations.
So in most, and we're going to move on here in a second, the, in the most recent uptick in terms of what you're finding in your program, in terms of suicide ideation, et cetera, does, how much has that played in the way you're thinking about future survey design?
Quite a bit. You know, as, as Mike mentioned, we, we saw that this, the Safe to Say Something data basically is, is right online with what we're seeing. We've seen the mental health issues increase every single year. The sad and depressed most days is, is frightening to me, and I think it is to most people. Kids that, that are dealing with these depression issues also have the, the co-occurring problems, substance use, truancy, engaging in, in delinquent activities. So we, I mentioned that we did add several programs to address those issues. We will continue to, to see where we can, can refine the survey to collect more information, to better inform decision-makers about what, what funding should go towards to, to help the greatest number of kids and families in Pennsylvania.
Okay, I, I'm, I'm going to have one last question. I'm, I've been struck by, so the audience, and underscore what Mike said earlier, about the fact that we have a series of hearings on different topical areas, all focused on the issue of guns. And I'm, I'm curious, because nobody wants to kind of go here, and I want, I, I think it's important, at least we get it on the table, the difference between the percept, the cultural perception around guns, and the experience that you might have in the urban context versus the rural context. I mean, I, I moved from Boston to Western Kansas, and my first day of public school teaching, I went down to the principal's, is anybody else concerned about half the pickup trucks in the parking lot have guns in them? And I went, oh, no, this is normal. Versus the urban environment that I lived in in Boston, which was considerably different. And so in terms of the feedback that you get, do you not see a difference between the urban and rural piece?
Absolutely. Pennsylvania is, is a very diverse population, counties vary, very much in their, their needs, their, their resources, and that's why PCCD has always tried to let the decision-making be done by the people on the ground, the local decision-makers. We try to provide the resources, we provide advice, we provide training and technical assistance, but we do not try to dictate a one-size-fits-all from the state level.
Okay. Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you.
And our next panel, we invite them to the table. We'll take just a minute or two here to transition. We'll get started here. To join us in the front, they're already seated. Let me introduce our panelists. Dr. Perry Rosen is co-chair of the Pennsylvania Suicide Prevention Task Force and consulting psychologists with the Bureau of Children's Behavior Health Services at the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services. Can you get that all on one card? Dr. Matthew Winterstein is Associate Professor and Director of Research for the Division of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry at Thomas Jefferson University and Jefferson Medical College, and I assume in the same family as Bruce Springsteen. No? Yeah. No. I get a lot of people asking me, because my last name's Koppel, are you related to Ted Koppel? No. Yeah, that's right. Captain Mark Shaver is Assistant Director of the Bureau of Records and Identification with the Pennsylvania State Police, glad to have you here. And then Corporal Natalie Watkins represents the Member Assistance Program with the Pennsylvania State Police. And Dr. Rosen, we'll start with you.
All right, thank you. Good morning. I want to thank the special counsel for the opportunity, as well as for the Preventing Suicide by Firearms Work Group, for the chance to talk about the Governor's Suicide Prevention Task Force, and the recommendations that are coming out of that group so far, as well as some of the statewide suicide prevention efforts that have been ongoing in Pennsylvania. We know that suicide rates have increased across all age groups, across both men and women, and as well as in most states throughout the country, including in Pennsylvania. It is the 10th-leading cause of death overall, and it's the second-leading cause of death for youth and young adults between the ages of 10 and 34. Nationally, as of our most recent year of record, we've lost over 47,000 individuals to suicide, and we know that firearms accounted for over half of those suicide deaths. There was a CDC data brief that examined trends in suicides as well over the past two decades, and found that firearms was the most commonly-used method of suicide among men, accounting for about 55% of male suicides versus 31% of female suicides. And poisoning became the most common method for women, accounting for about 31% of female suicides versus about 10% of male suicides. We know that firearms are a highly lethal method for suicide, with approximately 85% of suicide attempts using firearms resulting in a fatality. The Governor's Suicide Prevention Task Force was announced back in May of 2018, and the overarching goal of the task force was to develop a new statewide plan for suicide prevention across the lifespan. There have been prior state plans in Pennsylvania, those were separated for youth, as well as for adults and older adults, and so this is the first opportunity to look at suicide prevention across the lifespan, as well as to broaden stakeholder and agency efforts into this plan, as prior plans have really only been housed within the Department of Human Services. So we have leadership from multiple state agencies, as well as members of the General Assembly. The co-chair, along with myself, is Representative Mike Schlossberg, and we also have participation from Prevent Suicide PA, which is our statewide suicide prevention organization that the Office of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services in part helps to fund. Some of the agencies that are involved in this, just to highlight, besides human services are health, corrections, aging, education, military and veteran affairs, transportation, agriculture, drug and alcohol programs, the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and the Pennsylvania State Police. So we are going through an iterative process to look at our state plan, and another part of the Governor's Task Force has been to hold regional listening sessions throughout the Commonwealth. So far, we've held about eight, and our last one is going to be in a couple of weeks in Pittsburgh. We've had over 450 attendees, as, as well as representatives from the local suicide prevention task forces that have come to speak on local statewide, or local efforts within their counties. So I want to be able to highlight what we've been looking at as a task force in terms of this plan to date. We have a range of different goals that are all drawing from the National Strategy for Suicide Prevention, which has been developed from the National Action Alliance for Suicide Prevention, and we're really utilizing national guidance to drive these efforts, but taking in information from stakeholders as we've gone about our listening sessions to really try to refine the goals and objectives to the needs in Pennsylvania. So Goal Six of the National Strategy is what we've looked at so far for our, our goal that's relevant to today's discussion around addressing lethal means. And this goal is to promote efforts to reduce access to lethal means of suicide among individuals with identified suicide risk. We've looked at that goal, but also in taking in some of the stakeholder input from the listening sessions, one of the biggest points has been the language that we use to talk about suicide, and to think about the stigma associated with some of that language. So what we're looking for in terms of this idea of reducing or restricting access to lethal means is to rephrase that as means safety, and so that's something that the task force is going to be discussing. To go along with that goal, we have several objectives that are in draft form, but that I'm happy to share right now. One of those objectives is to increase training and educational opportunities for key stakeholder groups concerning access to lethal means, or around means safety, to promote awareness about the relationship between opioids and other substances to increase suicide risk, to disseminate resources and information at awareness events for targeted groups and the general public regarding access to lethal means, and then to create partnerships with state and local agencies and organizations to promote reduced access to lethal means. We do also have some very preliminary draft recommendations, that would be potential action steps to address this goal and some of these objectives. And these are still, of course, being discussed, but most of these recommendations revolve around the areas of training, awareness, and partnerships. And I also want to note that a lot of the efforts so far in this area have really been spearheaded by Prevent Suicide PA, and I know that Dr. Matt Winterstein is going to speak a little bit further about that. But I'll just go through what some of those recommendations to date are. We want to offer training on reducing access to lethal means at local and state suicide prevention conferences, as well as promote free online training resources, such as counseling on access to lethal means, which is an online training that's been developed by the Suicide Prevention Resource Center, and so is therefore readily available at no cost. Also talking about promoting lethal means reduction or means safety as an essential component of suicide safety planning for clinicians and licensing entities. We want to look at different groups that are involved in developing safety plans, or having these conversations with individuals through screening, for example, such as medical professionals, and look at training and tools to support their conversations with patients around access to firearms, as well as with schools and colleges in their efforts and conversations with students and their families around means safety. Some other awareness efforts that we've been discussing include developing handout materials on suicide prevention that we could be offering at gun shows and in gun shops, as well as disseminating gun locks to gun shop owners and at suicide prevention awareness events. And I can speak from some of our awareness events that we've had in partnership with some of the baseball teams in the state. Whenever we bring gun locks to these events, they are gone, we leave with none of them. So these awareness events provide a really good opportunity to get these tools out there to the public. As well, we want to look at, and we, we have started to, and Dr. Winterstein will be speaking to this, but utilizing Harvard's Gun Shop Project as a resource. They work with mental health professionals, educators, gun shop owners, and firing range owners to share guidelines on how to avoid selling or renting firearms to, to customers that may be suicidal. And it encourages owners also to display and distribute suicide prevention materials to customers. As well, partnering with firearm instructors to include a module on suicide prevention within their training, and then, of course, utilizing our county suicide prevention task forces that have been doing amazing work. We have about 30 task forces in different counties to develop lethal means subcommittees, or really push these efforts forward within their local structures, and help with that local dissemination and awareness. I just want to highlight a few, and this is outside of the Governor's Task Force, but some of the statewide suicide prevention efforts that we've been working on in Pennsylvania. We've been fortunate to be the recipient of multiple federal grants from SAMSA that are focused specifically on youth suicide prevention, and these are Garrett Lee Smith Grants. We've had these consecutively for over a decade now, and Dr. Winterstein has been involved in all of those as well. The beginning was focused on suicide prevention in primary care settings, and looking at screening and training physicians, and helping them to look at linking resources with behavioral health. And the most recent grant, of which I was project director, the third one, was focused specifically on schools and colleges, as well as on the Student Assistance Program in Pennsylvania. And that corresponded to state legislation, Act 71, that passed in 2014, that put forth new recommendations for schools to be implementing policies and procedures and trainings for suicide prevention. So we've done a lot of work there with training, with screening, including the use of a validated and standardized screening tool, and we've also piloted universal behavioral health screening within school settings, which has been something that many districts have found a great deal of success with in terms of early identification of youth at risk. Additionally, well, and I'll just mention, we do have a current and new Garrett Lee Smith Grant, which is focused on supporting continuity of care for youth at highest risk of suicide. So as they are moving between different systems where they're getting identified, and then maybe going through crisis, maybe going to hospitals and coming back out, we're looking at working with specific counties to improve the communication and collaboration to support those individuals. Just real briefly, I'll mention, we also have recently been awarded a grant to improve our efforts with the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. We know that, just as a state, we have only in the past been able to answer about 37% of the calls coming into the lifeline that are originating from Pennsylvanians in state. Most of the calls were getting bounced out of state to be answered. And so we just received funding, and Dr. Winterstein as well is involved in those efforts, to expand our capacity to take those calls from call centers in Pennsylvania. And Brittany Klein had mentioned Crisis Text Line as a significant resource for youth. We have a partnership with them as well at our office, which includes promoting a keyword, Pennsylvania, or the keyword is actually PA for Pennsylvania, which will allow us to get specific data on users that text Crisis Text Line with that keyword. So I just want to thank everybody, and, you know, we look forward, especially as the Governor's Task Force, to hearing the recommendations that come out of the work group. We also plan to adopt those recommendations as part of the plan and the following implementation efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry. Brad?
First of all, thank you to the special counsel for the invitation to present before you today. I think this is a wonderful step in terms of advancing our understanding of gun violence and how it relates to suicide prevention in Pennsylvania, and be thinking about the efforts that we can do to save lives. Suicide's a major public health problem, it's been a national priority since former Surgeon General David Satcher presented a blueprint for suicide prevention in the United States in 1999. This was soon followed by the President's New Freedom Commission Report on Mental Health, and eventually our first national strategy for suicide prevention in 2001. The recognition of the role of firearms in suicide deaths in the United States has been widely acknowledged. The National Action Alliance for Suicide Prevention is a public-private partnership tasked with advancing our understanding and approach to suicide prevention in the United States, as well as serving as the work group that developed the revised national strategy in 2012. Among the 13 goals and 60 objectives, the strategy calls to promote efforts to reduce access to lethal means of suicide among individuals with identified suicide risk. The CDC reports that about 50% of all individuals who die by suicide had a known psychiatric diagnosis. However, these data come from Medicaid databases and are therefore constricted to those covered by Medicaid. Psychological autopsy studies, or the practice of interviewing key individuals in the lives of those who died by suicide, as a strategy to prevent further morbidity and mortality, have routinely found that approximately 90% of individuals who died by suicide either had a diagnosed psychiatric illness, or likely had a diagnosis, or undiagnosed psychiatric illness. Further, treatment outcome data have found that approximately 50% of females and only 20% of males who died by suicide ever received any form of mental health professional treatment at all. These data, coupled with the reality that suicide attempts often occur within the context of high stress and acuity, further emphasize the significance of preventing access to lethal means during times of crises, particularly among individuals who have no identified professional and in some cases, personal support systems. This is particularly true in middle-aged and older men. Yet, even in adolescents and young adults, firearms remain the leading method of suicide. In the United States, firearms have consistently accounted for just over 50% of all suicide deaths. Only in 2016 did firearms account for slightly less than 50% of all suicide deaths, with it sitting at 49.8%. The fatality rate for suicide attempt by firearms between 84 and 92%, yet firearms are only utilized in about 5% of all suicide attempts. When a gun is in the home, it is highly likely to be the method of choice. Examining cohorts of individuals who died by suicide using a firearm- Examining cohorts of individuals who died by suicide using a firearm finds that it's disproportionately more common that the gun used in the death was stored in the home. In fact, across three different studies, it was found that guns were in the home in between 67 and 88% of firearm suicides, whereas guns were in the homes of relatives or neighbors in only 6 to 23% of all cases. And purchasing a firearm that is then used in a suicide death within two weeks of purchase only happens in approximately 3% of all cases. Dr. David Brent at the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center and colleagues examined factors contributing to both suicide attempts and suicide deaths of adolescents in an effort to determine which factors were more likely to contribute to an individual dying by suicide as opposed to surviving a suicide attempt. All other variables being equal, only the presence of a firearm in the home distinguished between adolescents who lived compared to those who died following a suicide attempt. Those with a gun in the home were two and a half times more likely to be dead. Population studies have found a correlation between gun ownership and suicide deaths by firearms. As gun ownership drops, so too does suicide deaths by firearm. However, the rates of suicides by all other methods remain stable. Interestingly, gun ownership is not associated with the presence of depression, anxiety, or even suicidal thoughts. In other words, individuals who are depressed, anxious, or even suicidal are not more likely to own a gun. However, owning a gun does, in fact, significantly increase their own risk for suicide. Comparing firearm suicide deaths in Pennsylvania to national data can be challenging, given some inconsistencies in certifying firearm deaths as suicides. For example, in 2017, 60.7% of firearm deaths in Pennsylvania were ruled as suicides as compared to 60% even nationally. However, in 2016, 63.8% of firearm deaths in Pennsylvania were ruled as suicide as compared to only 53.8% nationally. Explanations for this significant shift in national figures is unknown, making it difficult to compare suicide deaths by firearm in Pennsylvania with that of the nation. However, it does appear that firearm suicide deaths by young Pennsylvanians has mirrored that of the nation for the past several years. To combat suicide death by firearm, a number of strategies have been utilized, from gun buyback programs to extreme risk protection orders to the distribution of gun locks. The National Strategy for Suicide Prevention's Objective 6.2 suggests partnering with firearm dealers and gun owner groups to incorporate suicide prevention as a basic tenet of firearm safety and responsible firearm ownership. To this end, Prevent Suicide PA has begun the implementation of the Gun Shop Project, an initiative originating in New Hampshire in 2009, that includes reaching out and partnering with gun shop owners to provide education and raise awareness about warning signs for suicide, as well as provide informational materials to be made available with the purchase of firearms. The Gun Shop Project is now in 23 states, with New Hampshire boasting the success of 48% of all gun shops displaying and/or sharing materials produced by their program. To date, Prevent Suicide PA has held six conference calls with relevant stakeholder groups across the Commonwealth, including county suicide prevention task forces, the National Guard, the Veterans Administration, mental health clinicians, and numerous invested organizations such as Walk the Talk America, HoldMyGuns.org, the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, and the Pennsylvania Mental Health Consumers Association. Prevent Suicide PA has led discussions on the materials and the type of information to be shared with gun shop owners and is exploring the potential for video materials that could be shared by gun shop owners throughout their media and social media outlets. The Pennsylvania efforts are seeking gun shops and gun range partners to pilot this program and plan to continue these efforts throughout the fiscal year and beyond. Like many prevention strategies, however, the success of the program is hinged on the ability to engage all relevant stakeholders. Despite the evident need and data on the effectiveness of lethal means restriction strategies, strides forward around reducing firearm suicides have been minimal at best. Too frequently, politics have interfered with overwhelming evidence that having access to firearms during times of crisis significantly increased the probability for suicide. It must be clear, this is not a partisan issue about gun-owning rights, but rather a shared responsibility to look out and care for ourselves and others by reducing the likelihood that one is capable of engaging in a fatal behavior. Organizations such as the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and Forefront Suicide Prevention in Washington State have effectively partnered with the National Shooting Sports Foundation and the National Rifle Association, respectively, to advance the narrative around safe storage of firearms in times of crises. In fact, Forefront passed a bill through the Washington Legislature that motivates firearms dealers to participate in suicide prevention education and provide safe storage devices at no cost. Their partner with this bill was the NRA. Suicidal emergencies are frequently short-lived, and though they may recur, helping individuals buy time to get through these moments is critical to immediately save lives and create new opportunities to make sense of and overcome the challenges that sometimes make life feel unbearable. Having access to any lethal mean of suicide, including firearms, limits the potential for recovery and healing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Good morning, everyone. On behalf of the state police, I'd like to thank the special counsel for allowing us to take part in this important initiative and to make recommendations so that tougher or together we can develop in-depth strategies to reduce gun violence, particularly as it relates to suicide. With me today also is Corporal Watkins, the supervisor of the Pennsylvania State Police Member Assistance Program. This program is vital in providing a venue for troopers to discuss or seek assistance with professional or personal issues of their own. Suicide is a complex public health crisis affecting all communities. Its victims are far-reaching, and the pain is everlasting. From immediate to extended family members, from coworkers to first responders, to have to face these tragedies, it is important to treat everyone with dignity and compassion. Pennsylvania State Police fundamental goals are the prevention of crime, the preservation of peace, and the protection of life. Our effectiveness in achieving these goals is greatly enhanced when we all work together to respond to the needs of our citizens, particularly to those that are most vulnerable to suicide. As we've heard earlier, unfortunately, firearms are the most common method of suicide, used in about half of all suicides. The Pennsylvania State Police oversees and manages what's called the Pennsylvania Instant Check System, or PICHS. PICHS was established in 1998 and was designed to promote public safety by ensuring those individuals who are prohibited from purchasing or possessing a firearm cannot acquire one. The PICHS background check process is utilized by county sheriff, chief police of first-class cities, and licensed firearms dealers in Pennsylvania to ascertain an individual's eligibility to acquire a license to carry a firearm or to obtain a firearm through a purchase or a transfer. This background check involves the accessing of state and federal databases to make this determination. One of those databases is the Mental Health File. This is information the state police receive regarding those individuals who have been involuntarily committed. The Pennsylvania Mental Health Procedures Act requires that county medical review officers to notify the state police within seven days of a commitment. They can make this notification via our web services, by mail, or by fax. Once received, this information is entered into the mental health database, as well as the NICS Index, which is also known as the National Instant Check System, which is basically PICHS but on the federal side. Once entered, if an individual would attempt to purchase or transfer a weapon in or out of state, they would be prohibited. PA is the largest contributor of mental health records to the NICS Index in the country. So, the importance of notification is vital to preventing someone who has been involuntarily committed from obtaining a firearm. PICHS is only as good as the information that is entered or received. About two years ago, we established a checks and balances with our mental health partners. Every two weeks, we generate a message back to those counties advising them of the mental health commitments they sent us during that two-week period, and ask them to verify and notify us of any errors that can be identified, so we can make sure that the data is correct and accurate. This has improved our overall process and provided better reporting. PSP is always looking to improve our processes. We work with our state and federal partners to identify and investigate those individuals who attempt to obtain a firearm when they are prohibited and take corrective action or investigate those incidents. I'll now turn it over.
Good morning, everyone. Natalie Watkins, I'm the manager of our Member Assistance Program. I just realized that. Thank you. Just for a brief overview, our Member Assistance Program was designed, it benefits our troopers, our civilian employees, and their families. It's a peer support program. It started back in 1986 when our department recognized that there was a substance abuse issue going on within our members. Since 1986, that has evolved to recognize that troopers do experience a lot of trauma. They witness suicides. They witness child death or injuries. You know, sometimes they have to fire their weapon, and has resulted in a fatal injury to someone else, and nobody wants to do that. We've also realized there's, you know, the chronic job stress of being a trooper. You know, imagine being a young, a young trooper and a young father, and you go out and investigate an infant death. And if your child's the same age as that infant, that can be traumatic as you as that criminal investigator. So, our program was designed to be that peer support for those members. So, if we have an incident like that, let's use an infant death, for example, myself or someone in my unit will go out after the trooper gets back to the station, and we'll have a conversation with them called, you know, we do the critical incident stress diffusing. And our department has set up regulations where if you're involved in a certain incident, you're going to see someone from the Member Assistance Program to help take some of that trauma away, give you a chance, an opportunity to talk. And if we recognize a need where a trooper might need a little more, we'll set up and coordinate a debriefing with a mental health provider. And it's all confidential. Our unit prides itself on confidentiality, and that's a big deal to our members, because of course, there is a stigma, especially with police officers, you know, that counseling, someone's going to think I'm weak. And that's not the case. I think that stigma has got better because our unit works hard. There's seven of us full-time members. We have one civilian part-time member who's also a peer, and we have 104 volunteer peers and 74 part-time chaplains who volunteer their time. We're accessible all the time. Just last night, I've had a phone call from a trooper who just wanted, needed to talk for an hour. I spent an hour talking to him, because we're available 24/7. We put brochures around in all the departments. There's posters. We start from day one with the cadets and their family to say, "MAP is a resource for you. We're here for you," because there is a lot of trauma that troopers experience, and sometimes then they take it home to their spouses. Then you have some marital issues or problems at home. We're there to help them. We also, as other resources, because let me back up, and I apologize, we're not mental health counselors, we're not psychiatrists. We are trained extensively in listening skills, mental health first aid. So, we have developed a resource list that I think is wonderful, and it's huge, of different counselors throughout Pennsylvania, and I have it broke down into different counties. So, if I have a trooper that comes to me and says, "You know, I am really struggling with some depression or some PTSD and some substance abuse," I'm going to say to that person, "Where do you live?" Okay, I have a great guy who specializes in PTSD. He takes our insurance, and I'm going to refer them. And if they want me to help them make that appointment, I will help them make that appointment." So, we have the resources there for our troopers, because I think one of the first steps for us to help anyone else, whether it's dealing with suicide or something in the general public, is our troopers to be healthy. And I pride ourselves, I think our suicide rate is very low within our department, and I, you know, I give my members who work in the MAP unit a pat on the back for that, because we're out in the stations, we're talking. We have conversations about suicide when we need to. We talk to the cadets and their families. They know that there's resources available for them. And I think our department is good at recognizing different things. I will have supervisors call me and say, "Hey, Natalie, I don't want to pull Joe out on the table, but can you stop by the station and have a com, just say hi. Make sure Joe knows you're available for him." And I think that's a big deal within our department to be able to recognize those needs and keep our folks, whether it's a member or a civilian or someone in their family, healthy, both mentally and emotionally. We've, I think we've done such a good job. We recently had a lieutenant from the Oregon State Police come in and job shadow me for three days to see how our unit is run. I recently went over and handled an incident in Huntington County that the officers witnessed a suicide, and we were able to have, sit down, and it, you know, it was actually one of our troopers from the station that went to the locals and said, "Hey, let's give Natalie Watkins a call or somebody from the Member Assistance Program and let her come in and talk to the officers that were involved in that incident." And I think those things go a long way. A lot of local departments will reach out to us if they have an officer-involved shooting and say, "Can you come in and help us?" And I think that's because our program has evolved over the years. They know we genuinely care, and I think it's very important, and we take care of our first responders and our, and our police family. So, that's what we do. That's what we're here for, and there's always room for improvement. We continuously are taking classes to educate ourselves on suicide prevention, mental health first aid. Fact, there's a group of us going to Pittsburgh and taking several classes on some critical incident stress information and some suicide prevention for first responders. So, we're constantly educating, constantly evolving. But I, like I said, I think first and foremost, it comes to the mental health wellness of our first responders who are responding to some of these suicides and different incidents that are occurring out within Pennsylvania or out across the country. So, thank you for having me today and being willing to listen about what my unit does.
Thank you, panelists. We'll now go to questions. Natalie, just, I'm curious, in terms of what the state police have put together, are other departments within the state, the local police departments, are they doing what you're doing, or are they?
I know that some, some departments, I know more in Western PA, I know they have different CISM teams put together. Our CISM team in Pennsylvania, being the MAP unit, we deal mainly with police incidents. A lot of, some of the locals, because they are smaller units, are comprised of CISM teams that consist of, you know, fire departments, local police, different human service agencies within the county. I know there's a big one in Center County, and I apologize, I don't know all the local ones, but there are various teams. A lot of times, when they don't have a CISM team, they will call for the state police, and we gladly go out and do some courtesy work.
Are you training them at all?
I'm sorry.
Are you training the other departments at all?
No, we're not.
Okay.
We're not. There is a, the Critical, ICISF out of Maryland does a lot of critical incident stress training. We've trained with them. We're all certified for diffusions and debriefings. I've run into different local departments down there, because they train local chap, they train chaplains, police officers, firefighters, mental health providers. They do get different continuing education things, and they're probably one of the four leaders in, you know, providing that type of training.
Secretary Miller, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Yes, that's okay. Dr. Rosen, I actually had a couple, if that's okay. I'm happy to go in whatever order you'd like.
No, that's fine.
In your testimony, you mentioned screening being done in schools. What then happens after that? So, if somebody goes through a screen and it shows that there may be a need for mental health services, are they then transferred? What kind of handoff happens at that point?
Yes, so there are two different ways that screening happens in schools. Most of the time, that's been a targeted screen. So, that's been when a youth or student presents with some sort of suicide risk. They maybe make a statement or write something, or someone notices a warning sign. And with Act 71, schools have to have their own policy and procedure for addressing that. And usually, what will happen is they'll go to a counselor, a school psychologist, they'll do something more formalized in terms of a screening or assessment, and then determine if that student may need to go for further evaluation, whether they need to go to a hospital or something else like that. And that's usually school-specific in terms of the nuances of what that will look like, but it usually follows that pathway. The work that we've been doing through the Garrett Lee Smith Grant is to pilot universal behavioral health screening. And this is just kind of knowing that with our Student Assistance Program, we haven't always been good at identifying and referring the students that have more internalizing problems. That isn't always visible. Staff don't always know what to look for. And so, by doing universal screening, especially given the prevalence of some of the PACE data that Jeff had spoken about in the last panel, we know that suicidal thoughts are prevalent enough that it's worth being more proactive and trying to screen more broadly for. And since that's a relatively new practice that most schools didn't have any protocols for, it's kind of outside of, you know, Act 71, our grant team has been working with schools to determine what they want to do and follow up to that. So, if a student screens positive for suicide, the school is making a determination at that point, but usually that will follow their established protocols to speak with somebody who can then refer them out for further evaluation. In terms of other areas that they screen positive for, because the screener we're using isn't just suicide-specific, it's looking at other areas of behavioral health, again in order to be more proactive. Depending on what, what comes up in that, sometimes they're making a referral to the Student Assistance Program. Sometimes they're referring to their school counselor for ongoing monitoring. Sometimes they're getting, in most cases, they're getting in touch with the parents or family unless there's no, no risk identified. But we've worked with them to set up a follow-up protocol, because of course, if you're going to screen and identify kids, you need to be able to intervene.
Can I follow up on that? In addition to what Dr. Rosen's saying there, with all of these programs that we've ever done over the years through this Garrett Lee Smith mechanism, including back into primary care, but now into schools, we've always, it's always been a multi-tiered program. We never go into schools and start with screening, because there's two issues that come with that. The first is the schools are like, "What do we do with the information?" Even from the screening, turning it into a more formal assessment, understanding really what are the complexities of the problems. But more importantly, I think to your original question is, what do we do with them afterwards? Because if you ask, they will tell. And so, before we even start screening, what we do is we work with the local behavioral health agencies and partner with them. So, the schools are recognizing that this is what's going on, so that, you know, to Dr. Rosen's point, the pathway then becomes not just an option within the school, but there's some options outside of the school that we can help get people linked up with.
And our Student Assistance Program has really been instrumental with that.
Yeah, another question?
May I ask one more question? And, and I just can't help myself, because this is sort of the perfect panel, I think, to ask this gov-
to ask this gov. So I'd be interested in all of your ques- all of your responses, but, and Dr. Wintersen, you actually ruined my question a little bit with some of your statistics in here because I, now I'm feeling like this is probably a stupid question, so you all can tell me if that's the case. Because you said in your testimony that purchasing a firearm that's then used in a suicide death within two weeks of purchase only happens about 3% of the time. And I was thinking about, and Dr. Rosen, your testimony, you talked about sort of doing a lot with practitioners in terms of the discussions that happen with individuals and talking about kind of access to guns and other lethal means and things like that. So in my head, at least, I can envision what that kind of conversation entails. And given that most of these, most of the suicides happen because someone has access in the home, I realize that's probably the most important conversation is just access and what you can do to address that. But thinking about that person who may be in crisis and, and may then go to a gun shop, and I appreciate all the work that's been done with gun shop owners, would it make sense, or again, this may be a stupid idea, but I'm just interested in your thoughts, if as part of the discussion with someone, there was a discussion of whether they would perhaps be interested in having their name entered into PICs, for example, for a limited period of time, maybe a two-week period of time where they then would not be able to purchase a firearm? Again, this may be a really stupid idea, but just trying to figure out if something like that would make sense at all. And we'd have to figure out the, you know, would you want any record of that and all of those sorts of things. But I'm just interested in, in your thoughts about whether something like that is, is worth exploring. I don't know if those, I assume there's no entry into PICs, but I don't know if conversations happen as part of that lethal means discussion about purchasing versus just access to firearms that they have generally.
Well, I can start and then maybe you want to piggyback, but I know that, you know, keeping environments safe and this aspect of, you know, having that conversation is one of the key components of safety planning. And so that's usually what, you know, the avenue through which these conversations happen. And safety planning would be, you know, developed with that individual, integrating a whole host of, you know, individual level coping strategies, supports that they can access, but then kind of as that final piece to talk about keeping those environments safe. And I know that in these conversations, really any opportunity, and this is also part of national recommendations, but any opportunity for individuals to voluntarily, you know, kind of give up access to their, to their means, including firearms specifically, is really the, the way to go that is most heavily promoted. So whether it's through something like that, Dr. Wintersen had mentioned an organization called Hold My Guns, which is doing exactly that work as well. But that is definitely something that would be recommended as a best practice.
I just want, the 3% rate is actually a national rate. Now, I haven't seen it broken down by state, but as you know, there's different weight periods for different states. Pennsylvania, my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that you could walk into a gun-like show and walk out with a firearm. I suspect that in a state like Pennsylvania, this number might actually be higher. Because we know that people in acute crises, if you have access to anything in an acute crisis, the risk of suicide is much, much greater. And so having zero weight creates an issue.
Representative Nelson?
It's interesting, I'm kind of a little bit disappointed as a doctor you would speculate in that area, you know, because that's a very broad speculation. I really picked up on that 3% as well within two weeks following the purchase of a firearm because it, it seems to me that many suicide instances are happening when, when an individual may also be struggling with drug and alcohol, or there may be some end-of-life issues. I was, I'm not opposed to having, I think, suicide awareness and the, and creating more pathways, you know, having information at gun shops, in no way opposed, but that number seems really low when we look at other areas, like veterans are down from 22 to 18 a day nationally. You know, and oftentimes it's a hesitation for those veterans to lose, that they may lose their firearms, that they're not engaging in treatment because of the, the stigma of receiving that treatment. I just was wondering if in your statistics, you know, the individuals going through these short-term crisis, you know, divorce, end of life, specifically, I know of people who have taken their lives because of those crises, you know, a young person that's involved in a breakup. It just seems like, I'm not against putting pamphlets in gun stores, but that may not be the trigger that's pushing someone past the point of no return. Can you touch on maybe the benefit of including some other areas?
Well, I, I think certainly you, you have a valid point there, which is that, you know, if we reduce access to lethal means in moments of acute crises, then you do potentially, I shouldn't say potentially, you have a much greater chance than of significantly saving somebody's life. That said, it isn't necessarily the case that somebody who is suicidal is going to go and purchase a firearm that day to end their own life. There's lots of other methods and people choose various things based on oftentimes their own beliefs in terms of how fatal they may, might be, how little pain it might be, et cetera, and so forth.
Because I would almost wonder that it's not necessarily, I mean, for males, you know, particularly older males that are using firearms more, it's more maybe the hesitant, hesitation for them to engage in assistance, you know, because if we look at females, which we also don't want to be committing suicide, they're choosing other options. So when, when I listen to our Mental Health America counselors, it's more if they can't find this way, they're going to find this way. And they may engage in other types of behaviors. It's, it almost seems to be the, the avenue to be able to outreach to a person when they're in crisis so that they can get an understanding that this is a short-term event, that they can make it through versus the mechanism when they're, that they may choose to, to use it.
Right. It's important to remember that in Pennsylvania, there's actually avenues by which people can seek help that don't involve anything related to removal of firearms and things of that nature, certainly. And what I would say is that for individuals who are in need of outpatient care, what do I want to say? People die by suicide in psychiatric hospitals. That happens. So what I'm saying is that simply taking somebody and putting them in a hospital when they're at acute risk doesn't necessarily always save their life. It's certainly a greater option to saving their life than leaving them alone at home with a gun. So there are avenues. Voluntarily admitting yourself into psychiatric hospital does not necessarily fall under the, the law that Captain Shaver was talking about here earlier. So there's no incident of people losing firearms where, if, if we can engage people around this conversation, we say, listen, if you need help and seek, if you reach out for that help voluntarily on your own, this isn't an issue of losing your firearms. Now, there's a whole other conversation that's going to happen in the next panel about this, but at the moment, this is where we live.
And I can also just comment that from the public listening sessions, we've heard time and time again around the stigma around help-seeking, which I think is what you're alluding to. And so we know that from the standpoint of our plan, we need to have a comprehensive approach. So addressing lethal means is only one of the areas that we are looking at as part of this. We're also talking about widespread training and awareness building across sectors with special populations to really help understand these warning signs and mechanisms to provide support, help people understand how to access help and resources, as well as looking within our behavioral health system at some of the access issues and things like that, as well as also improving our data collection efforts to be able to look, you know, more directly at where we could be doing more prevention work, including this issue of lethal means as well.
And Jim, if I, if I can with, I mean, shifting over, you know, to, from a state police perspective, area of frustration, you know, personally is deaths in domestic violence, you know, and, and meeting and listening to the domestic violence folks, you know, a pretty big number of suicides occurs in domestic violence situations. And these are individuals that already should not have a, a gun, at least as my understanding. So like in 2018, we had 51 suicides, you know, 41 of those are by a handgun. Can you, I know that's a, I mean, it's a subset of suicide themselves, but that's one of those crisis situations that it's confusing to me by, because the domestic violence folks should not have guns already. And, you know, is there a disconnect that's occurring there or, or what? Because they're killing someone and then they're killing themselves, but they shouldn't have a firearm to begin with.
Correct. PFAs are obviously a prohibiting offense, so if you would attempt to purchase one or transfer one and you had an active PFA, you would not be able to get it through the system if you were doing it legally, obviously. Now, there are PFAs, obviously, that come with the relinquishment of firearms when you do, or they issue a PFA, which now you know, they have that 24-hour period where they have to relinquish them to law enforcement. So the problem some of that is, is, again, we don't know how many firearms you have. When we, you should have to turn your firearms in, obviously, it's what you relate you have to the judge or whoever's issuing the PFA at that time. So when they're relinquished, obviously, it's what you say they are, so.
We have a question from the audience, Michael Reed.
All right.
Can I respond to?
The question is what resources, including money, are available, recommended for local police departments and public safety committees to access and implement evidence-based prevention programs focused on suicide and gun violence? I guess I can, I can kind of kick this off from a PCCD perspective because we administer federal and state dollars geared towards juvenile justice, criminal justice system improvement and services to victims of crime. Specifically, we have federal and state funding streams where these programs would be eligible. We have one coming up in, in January, a justice assistance grant where local jurisdictions can come in for funding related to these types of programs and other programs around evidence-based prevention. I think Jeff talked earlier about our evidence-based program that comes out in January as well for, that's more of upstream prevention programming. And we have also funded local jurisdictions just recently in October for specific gun violence prevention initiatives in 10 jurisdictions. So those are funding strategies and evidence-based type programs to, to help those jurisdictions hopefully reduce gun violence. And we also, you know, related to suicide and mental health, we also have the Act 44 School Safety and Security Grant Program that, you know, some schools have come in for mental health services. That's obviously a, a big need that we've been, we've been talking about. So, you know, there's a number of different funding streams that we support that come out on a, usually an annual basis from PCCD. And, and those that are interested, I would encourage you, you can go to our website and actually sign up for automatic funding announcement notifications. That, that way you won't miss one if they come, if, you know, if they come to you and you're not interested, you can just delete it, but that way you won't miss it if it's something that you're really interested in. So, you know, if anybody else wants to add on that, he certainly can.
Anybody? Okay. Mark, I want to ask a clarifying question. You indicated, and I, that Pennsylvania is the largest contributor to the NICS reporting system?
Yes, for mental health records, yes.
Is that, I guess, why? Is it because you're enthusiastic about the system or is it because there's great demand or need?
I think it's because a lot of other states don't participate, I should say, or they are encouraged to participate, but they really don't submit the records. I mean, the NICS is always encouraging those states to participate, to provide that information because it's critical, not only because it's in the NICS index, but if a PA resident would leave the state, obviously that record would file them and now they would be prohibited because you're held to the PA standards or regulations even though you go to another state because they see that you're a PA resident, so. And again, for as far as the NICS index, we in 2013 submitted all our records in there. So we were having some difficulty at first as far as them taking our records. The ATF, again, it was all about recognizing the involuntary commitment and things like that. But over time and talking with them, we were able to submit them, they recognized them. And we submitted, I think, at this, to this date, I think we're up to over 900,000 records that we've entered into the NICS index. Now, again, that's, could be multiple people that are committed at that time or involuntarily committed, so.
So I want to ask this question, and you seem to be the ideal panel to ask this question to. Is it correlation or causation in terms of access to guns, in terms of us contributing to suicide? Everybody kind of dances around this, but I'd be curious to your.
Well, I, I think as I said before, there, there's a correlation between gun ownership and suicide deaths now, or, or suicide deaths, but there's no relationship in terms of people who are depressed, suicidal, anxious, having more likely or less likely to have guns. There's no difference. So depressed people, you can't say they're, anyway. So in many ways, then you're looking at a correlational thing from that perspective. However, if you do look at data that shows that reduction in gun ownership decreases, you do see a, like, I had a, I can show you a slide. You see an even distribution of actually the line of suicide deaths by firearms following that gun ownership line down. But if you look at suicides by all other means, that line stays stable, doesn't change at all.
So if, if I'm trying to understand what you're saying, if, if a person is suicidal and there's controlled access to firearms, the number of suicides is, they're using another means?
No. What's happening is they're not using a gun.
So they're using pills or?
Not necessarily.
A car or?
Not necessarily.
What, like, is the total number of suicides decreasing?
If, you know, we haven't looked at it quite that way, I think, in the United States in terms of actually looking at data to say, okay, if you reduce the number of firearms, you do, you can see historical data that over time, if the gun ownership decreases, suicide death by firearm decreases. So, and, and given that all other methods stay the same, one would argue that over time, yes, there should be a decrease in overall suicide deaths. We know that if you reduce access to lethal means, regardless of what type it is, you're more likely to have people live.
Could you speak a little bit more specifically about the gun shop program in terms of the pamphlets or the information that you're handing out? Is it that the gun shop is looking for suicide ideation? What, what does it do?
I think different programs do different things and there's some flexibility around it. The idea is to work with gun shop owners, gun range owners, to provide education to employees, to people that work there about risk for suicide, to be thinking about warning signs for suicide, help to recognize somebody who might be coming into their establishment to purchase a gun. And if there are warning signs about that person, that they then would have some tools to engage them with some support. That's one avenue. Sometimes there are just messaging, just, you know, public service messaging that gets put up in the gun shop that talks about if you're in, if you're in crisis and you may be suicidal, here is how to access support, whether it be the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, the Crisis Tech Line, et cetera. There's another step that goes beyond that where there's some discussion with some gun shop owners about actually inserting within the purchase of firearm. As you're in checkout and leaving, oh, by the way, attached to that is information on how to access services should you be in crisis.
And this program's purely voluntary, right?
It's a voluntary program, right. It started in New Hampshire 10 years ago and there are, what did I say, 48% of gun shops in New Hampshire that are actively participating in that. So 10 years, 48%.
Secretary Miller, did you have another question?
I did have a.
Yeah, sure.
On the, the question that came from the, is that attendee or crowd question, you know, a frustration, personal frustration with the PCCD grant system just in a subset is at times the competitive aspect of that grant. It, it incents, you know, the use of lobbyists and spec- like the, the people with the most money are winning the most grants, you know. Just in the example of the school saved the $60 million of additional money in the, in the school safety grants, you know, the, a portion was dispersed through the block grant process, but the larger portion was done through competitive grants. And the schools who could not afford having a grant writer or having a lobbyist submit their report for them, they didn't participate in the, the bulk of that money. I, I think like the metric should include free in-school lunch, you know, evaluation or even the aspect in Westmoreland County, we have a charter school that all adjudicated youth, you know, that get to that point, go to this Ketterer school. Well, because they're a charter school, they're not allowed to participate in, in the school safety grant program. And they can apply competitively, but it puts them at a disadvantage versus, you know, all, all youth should be able to participate in that block, you know, block style. So I, I understand, and I'm a believer in competition, but I think in certain aspects, maybe consideration to increase the block grant person and decrease the competitive portion would be helpful for, you know, all educators in that specific subset.
Yeah, yeah, I could speak to that a little bit. And obviously, it's a very competitive process. There's a huge demand for dollars and there's limited dollars available because there's a meritorious process where every school district gets a certain amount of funding and then there's a competitive process. I really can't speak to the outside pieces of that or, you know, around.
I just see the consequence of that because, you know, there are districts that have full-time grant writers or they're just hiring, hiring a third-party lobbyist. And if you don't have the resources, you just can't win, you know. And potentially in, not that I'm against competition at all, but when we look at educational resources going. resources going, you know, in these types of categories, maybe a consideration for a broader dispersion.
Yeah, and that's, and that's something that we look at from a year-to-year basis of how we can, you know, prioritize, look at the competitive process. But, you know, one thing that we do is, you know, we, we set it the same process for everybody, so it's the same standard. So you apply competitively based on those same standards, and, you know, so that we can make, you know, hopefully, fair decisions for everyone involved.
May I comment on that?
Sure.
Briefly. You're absolutely right. The way to win a grant is to have a good grant writer. Somebody who can write well is going to secure funding for you. That's true. I think there's a method of comparison to this. So speaking of the Garrett Lee Smith Grants that we get from the federal government through Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, their task was to fund as many states to do youth suicide prevention work as they can. Not every state has somebody who can write a highly competitive grant to do that. The way that they addressed this was, instead of having, here's four sections, just talk about these four things, and hoping somebody can create a wonderful narrative around this, they turned it into a series of questions. And so people were simply responding to questions. Now, again, they had to be concise about what they were doing, but they responded to questions as opposed to having sort of free-flowing narrative that had to describe in quite eloquent detail about what you were going to do. It made it easier for states who did not have grant writers to actually secure the funding.
Natalie, I want to follow up a question with you. How many people are in your shop responding, providing the services that you provide?
There's seven of us full-time.
Seven of you full-time?
One full-time civilian, 104 part-time volunteers, who are made up of troopers, civilian employees. And then we also have a chaplaincy program that runs through the member assistance program, and we have 74 volunteer chaplains.
How many state police?
How many members?
How many, yeah. Sworn officers?
Three-quarters of our unit is sworn, is troopers.
I mean, not in your unit, but statewide, how many sworn officers are in state police?
Well, over four, over 4,200.
4,200. So does the, I mean, it's interesting to me, we, we facilitate for the U.S. Department of Justice their Officer Safety and Wellness Initiative.
Okay.
And under the officer safety piece, the research that's come out, law enforcement officers are, live 21 years less than the national average, and the number-one killer of law enforcement is heart disease, and the second is suicide. And so in terms of the diffusion of resources to do interventions, and often, those are, by, by the way, about 60% of them in terms of suicide is by gun. And so the trauma, and I think, Perry, you spoke to this in part, the trauma experienced by first responders, or maybe it was you, Matt, that seeing suicide, observing suicide. Is there a statewide effort, besides what we're doing in the state police, to deal with that, the issue?
I know there's different, like, just yesterday, I took a webinar that was free on how to have a conversation about suicide. I know that's offered to anyone that wants to come across it. As far as any training that other departments are doing, I have to be honest, I'm not familiar with, because, you know, obviously, with the state police, like, our peers alone, we have, our, our peers are trained extensively through our department, and when they, when they apply to be a peer alone, they go through an interview process, and then a two-week training, where we have a mental health provider that comes in and teaches, then we have a critical, a week of critical incident training, then we have a yearly conference where we provide about three days of training, which I usually coordinate that. Last year alone, our peer conference consisted of one day of about grief, a day of suicide information on signs and symptoms to look for, and then substance abuse. And then the last day, we dealt with some policy stuff.
So Perry, is that in your radar?
Yeah, I was just going to chime in that there is a goal in the plan right now focused on training across sectors and settings, and we've specifically listed first responders, including police or law enforcement as a group that we'd want to target. And so that language will be in there, and then following the development of the plan, we want to look at a specific implementation strategy that would take some of those recommendations and talk about how to put those into action.
Okay. Mike?
Yes, we had another question from the audience. What is the difference in per capita suicide rates between rural and urban communities, if any?
I mean, I can give you the data in terms of, like, suicide rates. Historically, in Pennsylvania, the, the rural counties have significantly higher suicide rates than the urban and rural, and suburban counties. Thanks.
Okay. Suzanne?
Perry, Matt, could, sorry, could you guys speak to the presence or absence of comprehensive Pennsylvania-specific data, and just like the overall state of what data we have, what we don't, and how that affects interventions?
So that's actually something that the Governor's Task Force is really looking at. We do have that goal specifically around data and surveillance efforts, but we know that the data we do have at the statewide level lags behind by about two years. We have also heard in our listening sessions that going around, a lot of times, the counties through their task forces, because they'll have partnerships, in some cases with coroners, will have almost real-time data on suicides, which has been incredible in terms of informing their prevention efforts. They know this year-to-date how many suicides have occurred, and they have information on the populations at risk, and they can direct their local efforts to those populations. But at the state level, we're about two years behind. And so it does really impact our ability to think strategically about prevention and what's needed. So through the Governor's Task Force, we have started this data work group, where we are talking to all of the agencies involved and trying to compile what exactly they gather when it comes to suicide-related data. And the goal of this group, in alignment with the plan, will be to try to identify what those critical gaps are, and where we could invest efforts and put forth recommendation, recommendations to try to address those.
And the hope is to find data, there's multiple data sets out there, as you well know, and the issue is, how can we combine these together to have a more fruitful understanding of what's going on? The reality is, some of them are identifiable, some of them are not identifiable, some of them are identifiable by, you know, data point A, B, and C, whereas the other one has D, E, and F, and you can't combine some of these things together. So what we're trying to do is figure out how to improve the likelihood that we can do that, so that we can better understand what's going on, and then address this at a, a more broader public health level.
Okay.
Yeah, it's great with the, the efforts and the inner collaboration. I'd like to maybe suggest that we, part of that emergency services, we're trying legislatively to include our firefighters and volunteer firefighters in that group. It's a, it's a dogfight right now, but if the efforts of that task force are able to, you know, kind of include those. I was hoping that between each of you, in listening to our school counselors, again, they suggest potentially this, this issue of an educational component for not just teachers, but also young people about coping skills.
Yes.
Conflict resolution. I mean, I'm not one for unfunded mandates, but in any means, but this seems to pop up in drug addiction, college success after second year, you know, suicide prevention. Is that happening now, or would it be a benefit for education to consider?
So that has actually come up in, I think, every single public listening session that we've had, and we've even been fortunate to have some students come and speak about some of those needs, and just in terms of the stigma around accessing their counselors and seeking help, but also around the need to really promote and talk about and teach wellness and how to be well. So the Department of Education has been very involved in attending the listening sessions as well as the task force, and thinking about what we, we talk about as upstream approaches to suicide prevention, and really trying to build protective factors, coping strategies, empathy, you know, promoting those help-seeking behaviors. Jeff had spoken about self-regulation, all of those pieces. And I will say that a lot of that is being promoted currently throughout the state through some of the other groups focused on education, including the Pennsylvania Positive Behavior Support Network, through these multi-tiered systems of support in schools. We're looking at universal strategies to provide education and instruction to all students to build those skills from a very early age. So that work is starting, it's happening in a lot of places. I think we could talk about it being more coordinated and also collaborating more with the department around, you know, specific strategies to promote, but it is a big area of discussion and focus.
So you're, you're anticipating something that would get those young people, those elementary kids, and then kind of build as they're growing older and enter into new periods of strife that they would, so it'd be included as part of that growth curriculum?
Absolutely, and, you know, one of the evidence-based interventions that has been shown to reduce suicidal thoughts and behaviors is actually not a suicide prevention intervention. It's called the Good Behavior Game, and it's really a behavior strategy, teaching first and second graders at that early age some of those types of skills that we're talking about. But then at long-term follow-up, when those kids were 19 and 20 years old, they saw significantly reduced suicidal thoughts and behaviors in the group that received that intervention. So it really does speak to exactly what you're talking about.
Excellent, that's great.
Just made my day, mentioning Good Behavior Games. Very, very familiar with that program, and it's an exciting program. I have a question on, you mentioned that one of your objectives, and if you can amplify on this, Perry, on opioids. In terms of the distinction and suicide identification, how do you distinguish between an overdose and a suicide?
That is the magic question. Yeah, we don't have a great way, if you, if you want to come.
We have 67 coroners or medical examiners in the state of Pennsylvania, and each of them determines that based on their own knowledge and data presented in front of them. The problem is, I sit on the, the city of Philadelphia's Fatality Review Team, I review the suicide deaths of people 21 and under, and we review not only suicides, we review drug intoxication overdose deaths. And I can tell you from looking at those drug intoxication overdose deaths, the likelihood that a few of those were suicides were very, very high. They were not certified as suicides.
And does that go back to the stigma?
I think it goes back to stigma to some degree, but we also know historically, and this is, I think, less so true now, but historically in Pennsylvania, of many of the coroners, they were looking for things such as suicide notes to document a death as a suicide. We know that only about 25% of all suicide deaths actually co-occur with a note. That creates a massive problem around this. And so if you don't have evidence that the behavior actually was beyond a shadow of a doubt a suicide, it won't get ruled as a suicide. It will get ruled as an unintentional injury, a drug intoxication overdose, a fall, picket. They'll, they'll find something else to certify it as. But you can look at the data on some of these cases individually and say, there is an overwhelming amount of evidence that suggests this probably was a suicide, but without verification of that, they won't necessarily...
What's the remedy for that, Matt? Is it better training?
I, I think there's better, we need better data collection.
Okay.
We need better investigation after some of these deaths occur. There are investigators that go out through the coroner's offices and interview and talk to people and stuff like that, and I think we need to then utilize as much data as we can around this to eventually create rubrics that help us to understand that this, 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 and this highly suggest that. The problem is, we're still going to be wrong sometimes.
Yeah.
We're not in the heads of the people that die. We don't know.
Yeah, we have, I think we have time for one more quick question, and it was, can we share the National Shooting Sports Foundation and American Foundation for Suicide Prevention booklet on firearms and suicide and the national collaboration that has been initiated?
I think that's a question for you guys. It's a great booklet, I would recommend that you take a look at it.
We will include that.
Yeah, certainly. We, I mean, we, we have a website up on gun violence, we have our public online survey, and then we're going to include all the information from these hearings, along with the testimony from the hearings, so, and we conclude additional information on there.
So any last question from panelists? Good, Marcus? Okay? Good. Thank you for your participation. Very helpful.
Thank you.
And insightful. So we'll transition here into our third panel, which is focused on proposed and enacted extreme risk protection order laws. And Shara Goodman is here. She is the Executive Director of the Ceasefire Pennsylvania. So Shara will transition here, give us a minute. So as I indicated, our topic for this third and final panel is proposed and enacted extreme risk protective orders. Shara Goodman is here and is the Executive Director of Ceasefire Pennsylvania. We will have her testimony, and then we'll open it up for questions or discussion.
Thank you so much, and thank you to the council for being here. Ceasefire Pennsylvania is a statewide organization working to reduce the epidemic of gun violence in the Commonwealth across the country. We do that through education, coalition building, and advocacy. We were very, very happy when Governor Wolf issued the executive order creating this council, and we have been attending all of the hearings that you've been hosting and are very grateful for the, the informative hearings you've put together and the work of the council, so thank you. I know Representative Nelson well, he knows that I'm a lawyer, so I think that means I can speculate a little bit, but I'm going to try and keep it data and evidence-based. Before I go into this one policy that does do exactly what the prior panel was talking about, interrupting access to firearms during a period of temporary crisis, there were a couple of questions that came up that I just wanted to share, so you know. The, the bill that Secretary Miller proposed about putting herself on a voluntary no-buy list actually exists. It's House Bill 165, sponsored by Representative Maria Donatucci. It actually passed the House Judiciary Committee on September 24th with a vote of 22 to 3, although not everybody in the room may know what that means. I'm sure Representative Nelson appreciates that the House Judiciary Committee is, is controlled by Republicans, and many of them are very pro-gun rights. So the fact that it came out with that, I think this council could recommend that the House take it up. It's been sitting in the House since September 24th, but 22 to 3 is a pretty good vote on any bill to come out of judiciary. So I just wanted to share that, that Secretary Miller did not have a dumb idea, she had a very good idea that's actually working its way through the legislature. In terms of domestic violence, something that Representative Nelson asked about, he's quite right, that people who have protection from abuse orders are prohibited from buying firearms, but until last year, when the legislature passed Act 79 and the governor signed it, we didn't necessarily require surrender of firearms. That bill went into effect in April, and so any adjudicated protection from abuse orders will require surrender of firearms, and hopefully, in the coming years, we'll see a reduction in those suicides and homicides that you're talking about, and I'm sure the Coalition Against Domestic Violence will be tracking if there's a change. I certainly hope there will be. That was another bipartisan success, I think, in Pennsylvania. In terms of PICs and NICS, another great system we support, and as, as the state police testified, we started sharing our records in January of 2013. Before January of 2013, one record had been shared from Pennsylvania, so we were like other states and weren't necessarily sharing the data. There were some issues with whether the feds would accept the data after the Sandy Hook shooting, ATFBN accepting much more data, and with the push of a button one Friday afternoon, Governor Corbett and the state police uploaded about 640,000 mental health records. And since then, even without a legislative mandate, Pennsylvania has continued to share those records. The problem is that to, to be prohibited under NICS, you either need to be adjudicated incompetent by a judge, or be involuntarily committed to a mental institution. That's a very high bar, right? That doesn't happen to a lot of people. And so, so that prohibition because of mental or emotional crisis or illness is both under and over-inclusive. Some of those people who are now prohibited for life from firearms are never going to hurt themselves or others. They've gotten treatment, maybe they're on medication, maybe they got through their crisis, and, and they've lost their firearms rights forever. But what about the person who has never had a problem, who's never been identified by the criminal system or the mental health system, has never been in treatment? What do we do about that person? Because, again, this is not about a diagnosis, it's not about a label, we're talking about specific behaviors. And so the bill that I'm going to talk about is something that we believe, and that 17 other states in the District of Columbia have found to be true, can help with the temporary interruption of access to lethal means. In Pennsylvania, we have two bills pending in the State House and Senate called Extreme Risk Protection Order Bills. Their prime sponsors are Republican Senator Tom Killian and Republican Representative Todd Stevens. These are bipartisan-supported bills. Representative Stevens' bill actually did pass out of judiciary during the last session, but did not get a vote. It's been, both of those bills are sitting in judiciary committees and have been all session. The way these bills work is a model on the domestic violence situation, where you could have a temporary, it's a civil process, not a criminal process, and the, the bill in Pennsylvania would allow family members or law enforcement to go to a court and identify somebody who is at risk of harming themselves or others through a list of behaviors, again, not through a diagnosis, not through a label, not because they're on medication, but through observable behaviors, and ask for them to be temporarily put on a no-buy list and to have their firearms temporarily surrendered. In almost every state, I believe in every state, there's, these are two-step processes. So there can be an emergency or temporary order that is issued, and that can be done on an ex parte basis. That is the most controversial part of the bill, that somebody could go, and I could go and say, my son is in crisis, this is what I'm observing since he's gotten back from school, he's drinking more, he's fighting more, he's talking about killing himself, I'd like to put him on a no-buy list, but he doesn't have to be notified in advance. However, under the, the bills as designed, and I'll refer to the House bill, because I think that bill has been amended more recently after input from both the ACLU and the American Foundation for the Prevention of Suicide, if you go to a hearing officer, the magisterial district judge, that, that order could only be in effect for five days before there would have to be a full hearing, up to five days. If you go to a court, an elected, you know, full judge, common police court judge, it could be in effect for up to 10 days before the full hearing. So although there can be an ex parte order where that requires firearm surrender, we're talking for a very short period of time, and that five-day and 10-day windows are actually shorter than most of the rest of the country. Some of them go up to 14 days, some of them... Some of them go up to 14 days, some of them are seven. And at times, I know that Representative Stevens talked to people last year about making those even shorter, and one of the concerns was giving the respondent time to get an attorney. But we're still open to negotiations if we have people to negotiate with on that. So in addition, after, the judge has a list of factors that they can go through. We have limited that in the Pennsylvania bill to behaviors demonstrated within the last 12 months, so we're not going back. Some other states go up 24 months, some go even further. We've limited that, and the judge would have to explain the order. At the full hearing, the respondent has the right to counsel to be provided for them. They have the right to cross-examine witnesses to present their own testimony, and the standard is high. It's clear and convincing evidence. If the order is issued, the respondent has the right to come back. It can only be issued for up to a year. Guns will be surrendered, firearms will be surrendered, they're on a no-buy list. When that order expires, at the end of that year, their name is removed from the PICs-NIC system, their firearms are returned, and it's as if it's expunged. And during that year, they can come back to the court and present evidence that the order should be lifted, and they have a lower standard of proof, preponderance of the evidence. There's a lot of due process built into this, and I know Representative Stevens and Senator Killian spoke to a lot of other states and a lot of stakeholders to try and get the best version of this bill for Pennsylvania. Often, I hear, what about my crazy ex-girlfriend who wants to come back to me and take my guns away? So I have a couple of things to say about that. First of all, we know that the rate of false accusations under protection from abuse orders and these kinds of orders is very low. Second, we have built into the system that abuse of the process, false accusations, will at the moment resort in a misdemeanor conviction, but they could go up to felony. There's, Senator Killian is considering that after the Senate hearing, and we are not opposed to that at Ceasefire Pennsylvania. Third, restitution and immediate restitution by the person who abused the system and immediate return of the firearms. I would also say, and if you don't know this, then you should ask, you know, your mother or daughter or wife or female colleague, we as women really do not care to bear in public the details of prior relationships unless we believe that we or our children are in danger. So this trope of the scorned woman really has to be put to rest. We hear it a lot, we heard it a lot during the domestic abuse bill debates. I heard it during the Senate testimony. I feel very strongly about it. But we did write things into that to deal with that complaint as well. Three states have had cases on this already, Florida, Connecticut, and Indiana. All three have upheld these as not violating the Second Amendment or due process. I know that some people, you know, due process is a big deal. To deprive people of the right to possess firearms is a big deal. We have lots of instances where the deprivation sometimes occurs before the full hearing. The key things there are notice and hearing, and I think having such a short window, that five to 10 days, I think a court, I think our Pennsylvania courts would uphold that as in standard with due process. And I also think that we're doing this because of a risk. It's a risk of harming self or others. The doctors testified better than I can about the data, about what it means when you have that access. And I know that there was a debate about, well, only 2% buy guns and then kill themselves with them, but Dr. Winterstein said he believed that was higher in Pennsylvania, and we know that often people who haven't had guns in the home, who then buy guns for suicide, are dead within the hour. I know personal cases of that, and there is data on that that I'm happy to share with the committee. So I think we have to think about, in addition to all these other tools, I am a supporter of the Gunshot Project. I think it's a great idea. I learned about Hold My Gun last week. I think that's also a great idea. But are there other tools that we can give families? Two weeks ago in Philadelphia, a young man came home. He was a diagnosed schizophrenic. He had gone off his medicine. His mother realized that something was wrong, and she took him to a hospital. He left before he could be assessed. He said he didn't want to talk. The next day, he bought a rifle at a Philadelphia store. He carried it home on secta, and then he shot up his mother, stepfather, and two younger stepbrothers. That would have been the perfect case for this kind of thing, if the mother could have put him on a no-buy list while she got him treatment, even though she didn't want to involuntarily commit him and he didn't want to be voluntarily committed. It's just another tool for families, and it does very much what the prior panel was talking about. It's a temporary solution to a temporary problem. So we know that often people who are suicide ideation or suicide attempts have given some warning signs, but they don't necessarily have a previously diagnosed mental illness. So they are falling through the cracks, but if people who love them, people who see them, law enforcement notices something is going on, this is another tool in the toolkit that families can use. And there's a lot built back in so that people don't have to be afraid of what Representative Nelson said, of losing those gun rights for life. I know we might disagree about the losing the gun rights at all, but it's not for life. It's not permanent, and it's a process that is working in 17 other states. And it would take a lot of education at gun shops and at police and at hospitals and families, but I think it's something that the council should consider. Again, those bills are pending. I think that's, I'm happy to answer some questions about the other states that have them or whatever else you want to know about the bill, but we're working really hard. The Senate took really extensive testimony from experts, from the NRA to folks from Prevent Suicide PA to NAMI, and there's a great record there from the Senate Judiciary Committee, if you want to include that testimony in your council.
Thanks, Shara. I'm not an attorney, so this question may seem a little naive on my part. Have these laws been tested at the U.S. Supreme Court?
No, they haven't gotten to the Supreme Court yet. Right now, Indiana, Connecticut, and Florida state courts have upheld their own laws. Remember that these are state laws, so they would first go through the state courts unless somebody is challenging them as a federal violation of the Fifth Amendment or Fourteenth Amendment, due process, or the Second Amendment. Those cases have not percolated up yet. Supreme Court hasn't been taking a lot of gun-related cases, although they are hearing one in December about a New York thing, but these cases haven't made it that far yet. These laws really got more popular after the Parkland shooting. They started, Indiana, Connecticut have had theirs in effect for quite a longer time, and they are law enforcement-based after law enforcement officers were shot by people who seem to be at risk. And there's some good data. Duke and some other institutions have studied it. Connecticut's have shown to reduce suicides. They believe that for every 10 orders issued, they've prevented at least one suicide. Indiana also believes they have about a 7% suicide reduction. So I think that, you know, what the prior panel said about means mattering and interrupting, you know, they're not seeing the other forms of suicide going up. And so that's what the data is consistent with here, and I would just refer you to the Coalition to Stop Gun Violence, and I cite that in my testimony.
Yeah. So the continuum of laws or how they, or the circumstances or situation, how are these, how effective is the enforcement of these?
Well, very effective. I mean, the sheriffs have to go out and serve the order. Yeah, that's obviously, and the state police, I think, will tell you, the most dangerous time when you're serving an order, same in domestic violence cases, so there's got to be training. We also, as was stated earlier, we don't have a registry of guns in Pennsylvania. We don't know who has what guns. We do have a database of handgun sales that occur in Pennsylvania, but we do not have a registry, so we don't, unless somebody reports how many guns they have or somebody knows very well, they don't always know what they're facing. So there is that training, but usually the, and Senator Reagan was actually asking, one of his questions at the hearing, at the judiciary hearing, was could you have service almost immediately so that law enforcement officers would be in less danger?
I'm curious your thinking on, I was struck this weekend in a 60 Minutes report where the state of Colorado on red flag laws, that half the counties have been declared Second Amendment sanctuary counties, that law enforcement really doesn't want to enforce these?
Yeah.
Do you feel that resistance from law enforcement?
We haven't seen that in Pennsylvania. I mean, first of all, look, right, law enforcement officers have to enforce the law. They are not the arbiters of what's constitutional or not. That is, the legislature passes laws and the courts weigh in on them. I mean, I think that they are being rogue sheriffs, and, you know, unfortunately, that political fight is being played out on the ground. I think that's dangerous for them, and I think it's dangerous for their public. So, you know, often we actually, I don't usually call them red flag laws. Josh Horowitz, who was on that program, you know, has talked about that that's a little bit stigmatizing. But yeah, I mean, there's, look, I mean, I'm sure police officers and our sheriffs enforce all kinds of laws they don't like, right? But I think that's very dangerous, and I think that, you know, that's going to come to a head. I hope not in a violent way. I hope it'll come to a head in a courtroom.
Sure. Question? Yeah. And it's always good to see you, even though we may disagree on a number of things. There are things we do.
No, you're one of my favorite reps.
Very much agree on as well. Can you walk me through that, you know, because with the red flag laws, I, you know, I have concerns about constitutionality, you know, with that ex parte component, but also, like, just at the end of your testimony or at the end of that question you were sharing on, so would you envision the sheriffs would go to the home, enter the home, and search it for guns and then take those guns? How, how does that get implemented, and how does that not become very scary for me as an American?
Right.
That, you know, because, you know, I've served in countries where government did that, and the results are catastrophic, you know? So how would the sheriffs, like, search the home? How do they, you know, like, how does that work?
I think, I mean, I think we need some input on this from the sheriffs, but I believe that if there's, if there's an ex parte order and a full hearing order, obviously it would be different. And not every, not every person who goes to get an ex parte order gets it. Sometimes they just order the hearing, right? And then they get the full order. Or sometimes they get the ex parte order and at the full hearing, when the person comes and presents their evidence and it says, I'm getting help, I've passed this crisis, they might, they might vacate that order. But I believe the way it would do is when you're serving notice that an order has been filed against you, a petition and an order has been filed, there's also a notice to surrender. I don't know if that would be accompanied by a warrant or if it's self-reporting. I mean, I think, assume if somebody barricades themselves in their home, when they get that knock on the door, we're going to have a different situation than if somebody's family has told them this is coming. But I think that they go and they serve the order to surrender, just like they would in the domestic violence case.
But what I'm, like, what is a little bit different with the red flag law is, like, so if I was being held, then, and the sheriffs came to my home, and nobody in the home wanted to hand those guns over, then you're, like, what happens? Does the law enforcement?
If you're being held, where?
So let's say I'm, I am, I'm not there, or I am there, and I choose not to hand over because I feel it's a, it's a dispute, and, like, there's, it's very scary in some ways that this would, you know, because someone's going to come and take someone's guns.
Right.
And the person who's having their guns taken has not even had a chance to be heard in a court of law. So can you walk me, like, I just can't understand who's, do the state police come and take these? Do the sheriffs take them?
I think it would be the sheriff, and I think that they would have to serve notice of the order, which would explain when the hearing would be, that they have the right to counsel, that they have the right to present, you know, all the rights that are concomitant with that, and that temporarily they need to surrender their firearms, and may get them back right at the next hearing, get a receipt for all their firearms and what's going to happen with them, and...
So if somebody says, I don't want to surrender my firearms?
I think they say, there's a court order, and you can come challenge that order with the...
But you don't get to challenge it in court. You know, they're coming for your guns.
Within five to 10 days, you do.
Yes. So what, what happens then? Let's say I'm, and I would not...
What happens in the five to 10 days?
No, what happens at the, at the time of exchange? So if, if the sheriffs come to my farm and say, there's been an allegation against you, and it could be triggered just because I was going to buy a gun, right? That could, so if I purchase a gun, that could trigger an ERPO.
I mean, that's one of the factors, but I don't think a judge would just use that. It's with all the other behavior that's demonstrable, not that you've just recently bought a gun.
But that could be a triggering event.
It could be a trigger, given everything else. If all of a sudden you've come home, you lost your job, you've started drinking, you've locked yourself in the basement, and by the way, you bought a gun for the first time, that might be evidence, and that's probably why this person, who hopefully loves you, is concerned about your safety and well-being, right?
So if, if...
It's not the state just initiating a petition against you. Somebody has to have demonstrable evidence.
If somebody buys a firearm, that, that could trigger an ERPO in and of itself, right? Or do you have to have multiple things?
I think the way that it's written, here are factors to consider.
So if somebody bought a firearm, that could, in and of itself, it could trigger.
That's one of the factors that could be considered.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I think we trust judges to weigh evidence, to assess credibility, to kind of look at the totality of the circumstances and decide. And they have to decide whether those factors are there and if safety, imminent safety outweighs waiting for a full hearing with both parties. Those, that's written into the statute. I quoted that language in my testimony, that two-pronged thing. It can't just be that the factors are met, right? It has to also be that they don't think it's safe to wait for the full hearing.
So if we, if we come back to my farm, and this is, I mean, it's just a, I'm trying to, like, work through, and I choose not to voluntarily hand over my guns to those sheriffs, who takes them?
I think they take them.
So...
They have a court order. I think they would try to forcibly remove them. I don't know if they would have to call local police to assist them. I don't know if that would, I mean, I can pull up the bill and check if that triggers an arrest. I don't think that it does unless, you know, there's kind of disturbance, but I think that the goal is to peacefully have that transfer.
But I guess that's part of the concern where, in Pennsylvania, like, the prior testimony, you know, they've touched on our 302 system, you know, and you and I have worked together on legislation for the 302. I think personally, we could improve it in Pennsylvania and have a more clear pathway for that firearm restoration. But I guess, you know, part of one of my biggest concerns as an American, that under this bill, just as you said, the, you know, the sheriffs could enter your home and forcibly take your guns.
Right, but they're doing it under court order. We have, right?
Correct. But the court order could be issued without giving me a chance to defend myself.
Right, but you're, and you're going to get it in five days. I mean, that's what, we have upheld all kinds of ex parte, ex ante deprivations as long as there's notice and a, it's a short time period. That five days is, I think, the shortest in the nation. As I told you, the Senator and Representative Stevens are willing to make it even shorter. It's a, I think you're weighing a balance of, if somebody that sees you, that has good evidence with you, we're not talking about your ex-girlfriend, we're talking about your wife, your mother, somebody who lives with you, says that this person's in crisis and they have access to guns, and they're trying to temporarily do that, I understand that it's a balancing act, but, I mean, for me, and I think I trust the court, we trust the court to do all kinds of things, to make that, to weigh that balance. And we, we have deprivations all the time, and, you know, people don't get to decide if they have a temporary restraining order if it requires them to surrender firearms. They don't get to decide, I don't want to. I mean, people, we live in a society that's governed by laws.
So Shara, has the National Council of State legislators come out with model language on ERPOs, do you know?
I don't know that the National Council has. I know that the Consortium for Risk-Based Firearms Prevention Strategies, you saw them on 60 Minutes, have, this bill is, these bills, 1075 and Senate Bill 90, are based on those and on conversations with our ACLU, who last year had some opposition, is now neutral, the American Federation for Suicide Prevention, which this is the first bill that they've come out in support of, you know, state police, the DAs. So, you know, Pennsylvania doesn't always just copy somebody else's bill, like, we, right? We, our legislators work to, because Pennsylvania is unique. You heard how diverse we are. We don't really care what anybody else does. So I'm giving, I mean, am I right, Representative Nelson?
I would agree.
So they wouldn't just copy a bill. They really talk to a lot of people in other states.
Well, when I'm, I guess, when I'm trying to get at, it's not that they need to copy a bill, but is there model legislation in the states that could best or better inform, that gets broader support, that Pennsylvania could be, could learn from?
I think, right. I mean, I think we have, my friends at the Coalition to Stop Gun Violence have a document from July that outlines the key features of the 17 states that have it. I'm happy to share my copy with you. You can have it. But I think that the work that went into these two bills is based on the model legislation from the consortium and conversations with other states and all those stakeholders internally as well.
Yeah.
Can I just, and I really appreciate the dialogue. I know we disagree on this issue, and I'm, you know...
No, I know you're going to vote for it. I'm going to get you there.
If we look at our, our cities, you know, in our urban areas, where 79%... If we look at our cities, you know, in our urban areas, where 79% of the gun violence is committed with illegal guns.
Right.
That if I'm a drug dealer and I have two or three guns, does this, like, how does the red, because I would be a known and recognized person that would, I guess, is this, does this, how would the ERPO for a person who is known and recognized or somebody who has a history of violence, does this, how does this, does this impact them? Would this increase safety in our cities?
Somebody could use an ERPO against somebody like that. I think probably more effective is talking to the police about criminal activity and people having guns illegally. That might be, for some people, that might be a dangerous choice, right? The, I think that ERPO is going to be more effective, reducing our suicide problems in our suburban and rural counties. I think the problems that we see in our big cities, we need to talk about, and I think you're going to talk about that in two weeks, at Temple, the community violence problem, we need to talk about investment strategies. Why is it a better strategy for somebody to have a gun economically than not? Why do some people think they're safer on the corner with a gun than not? All the data shows that's probably not true, but, you know, I think so, I think there are different strategies. I think we do need to deal with the fact of, you know, some of the data that the Attorney General's office is doing with track and trace, how we see how those guns move, where are they coming from, how long the crime, how far, I think those will be better data points for the legislature to deal with urban gun violence and community gun violence. But, yeah, you could bring an ERPO against somebody if they wanted to, and certainly, you know, our cities are not immune from suicide. It's just the problem, you know, your risk of dying-
So ERPO is really, because I would kind of agree with you, I think law enforcement may be using warrants to pursue that, that known drug dealer.
Yeah, I think it's a different strategy, but, you know, there could be people living in our cities who need this tool, and the case I talked to you about was in the city of Philadelphia.
And in the, in the situation, that, I mean, just terrible situation with the example that you gave, where the mother and the son who was having schizophrenic troubles, you know, which resulted in a multiple shooting, if the mother would have opted to use the 302 system-
But she went to the hospital, I mean, this is another problem, right? They've now closed their emergency room because of this case. She went to the hospital, and he didn't get seen, he said he was having no problems, he didn't want to talk to anybody. I guess, you know, I don't know, I can't imagine, you know, as an adult son, he probably is a lot bigger than her, I mean, maybe she felt like at that point she had to take him home, and she couldn't involuntarily commit him, and the hospital was over, you know, overburdened, understaffed, and it looks like that may result in a lawsuit, from what I'm reading in the paper, but this could have-
Because I, I mean, that's just terrible, you know, and in the use of the 302 system and the speed that our, that our state police does a really good job of, that may have worked to prevent the purchase of that rifle.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
But the other thing is, I mean, had he voluntarily committed himself that night, right, had he consented to, he still wouldn't be on a no-buy list ultimately, right? And you, I'm sure you know that in a lot of our counties, people turn those 302s into voluntary for that very reason. People are hesitant to commit people because they don't want them to lose their gun rights. We've talked about this, like, how can we make sure people are using the systems that we have without fear of a permanent loss, right? And that balancing. And so I think that we do need changes to the 302 process, and also, this is a tool for people who maybe aren't up to the level, you know, not everybody who's having a crisis needs to be removed from their home, removed from their job, removed from their family. This lets people be in place. Maybe somebody needs alcohol counseling, maybe somebody needs job counseling, maybe somebody just needs a cooling-off period, you know? Not every crisis is the same. The 302 process is there for a reason, and we should fix the problems with it, but this is, you know, separate, another avenue.
And in an area where we do agree very much so for that 302 process, where we were saying, you know, if we had a structure, maybe two years, and then they would need to get some court process to be able to have those rights restored.
Yeah.
Can you touch on, because I think we were feeling that, hey, maybe that could get more people mental health because they would be less hesitant because of the extended time that-
Right, well, currently, I mean, under our 302 process, if you're involuntarily committed for more than 72 hours, you've lost your gun rights for life. Representative Nelson and I agree, and we have supported bills going, going back in time, that that's too long, that there should be an easier process, a restoration of rights process, which by the way, would get Pennsylvania NIC's improvement money, if we have that legislatively. And I think we should do that. We should give people the opportunity to go before a judge, to have their rights restored, to talk about what they've done, why they're no longer a threat, you know, whether that's they're taking medication regularly, they're in treatment, or the crisis has passed. I mean, there should be an evidence-based opportunity to do that, and I think, I think Pennsylvania should move towards that. But I still think that, again, not everybody who has a temporary crisis needs to be 302'd, and we should have other tools for families to deal with these issues. I mean, every family knows when there's something wrong, and people, people don't always have the tool. I have a friend that I work with whose husband killed himself in Florida about 10 years ago. He had, he had an attempt, he was home from the hospital. They said, "If you have guns, get them out of the house." She tried to get his gun out of the house, he said, you know, "I really," she locked it up. He wanted it back for target shooting, she gave him the key, and a couple of weeks later, he killed himself with that gun. Now, had, she lived in Florida at the time, they didn't have an ERPO law, but she would have had the ability to take that gun away. She could have called, she could have gone to court and gotten an order, and it wouldn't have just been heard, like throwing it in a river somewhere or something. So we know that these things can work. We also think, although it probably wouldn't help with the urban gun violence that you're talking about, it, we, there is some data that it may have interrupted some mass shootings that often also result in suicides, and that, you know, you can't, you can't measure what didn't happen, somebody said that earlier, but you can, you can look at the trends in the data and what people report.
Let me follow up this question somewhat connected here. Do you see ERPO legislation laws as a complement to the Mental Health Procedures Act?
Yeah, definitely. I think it's another tool for families. I think, you, I do know that my friends at the NRA are trying to rewrite the 302 Act, I think in a different way than Representative Nelson was talking about, to just see if they could subsume something of ERPO in there. I haven't seen their drafts yet, I've heard rumors. I think they're parallel, parallel paths, and that we need to give families all the tools we can, because we need to do what evidence shows us works. And if that's interrupting access at a crucial time for a temporary period, I think we can trust our judges to make those judgment calls.
Shara, thank you for your testimony. Very helpful. I'm going to turn it over to Mike for closing remarks.
Yeah, just before that, one last question briefly. Can you talk about question, persuade, refer training and how county suicide prevention task forces might play into this conversation?
Oh, yeah. I've done the QPR training. It's training that's available counties roll it out, usually for free. I went to a full, a half-day training at a local synagogue, and they teach people how to talk to people about suicide, and they go through, it's not easy, right? You have to actually say to somebody, "Are you thinking of harming yourself? Are you thinking of killing yourself?" But they teach you the questions to ask, and then the referrals to make, and so that you can be that person. It's tough, but it's, it bases off the idea that people know and that people want to talk about it, that it's not, if you can interrupt a plan, if you can be there for somebody and help divert them, that you can save lives.
Okay. Thank you, Shara, and thank you for your testimony today. And, you know, I want to thank everyone for being here today and for your thoughtful questions. I want to thank all of our panelists for your time and testimony, as well as the time from our special council members and guests. I also want to thank York City School District. Thank you so much for your hospitality, for hosting our event. As a reminder, you know, please visit and utilize our online public comment survey, that's on our PCCD website at pccd.paa.gov, where, you know, we welcome your ideas, your thoughts, and perspectives. You know, this is really, as I said before, the start of a process, and we'll continue to gather research, data, identify best practices, as well as get additional feedback and testimony from across the state to, to help the special council develop informed recommendations. So thank you for being here.